She will be left by super smart.
I'm Hooker.
You all ready?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Walker is currently traveling with a delegation to our sister city in Besse-Saint, France. Ms. Paige Rice taught me how to say that word. In her absence, I'm calling this meeting Charlottesville City Council to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order business, Ms. Roll Call, Ms. Rice.
Dr. Bellamy.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Here.
Ms. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Signer.
Here.
Ms. Govan.
Here.
Next, I'll invite my colleagues to make some brief announcements. I think we'll start with Kathy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. A lot more to say. I'm very happy to make this announcement that our own Holly Lee has been selected the 2018 recipient of the Chamber Business Diversity Council John F. Bell Senior Vanguard Award. And the award's going to be presented at the Chamber Business Diversity Luncheon Tuesday, September 18th, that's tomorrow, at the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center. The Charlottesville Regional Chamber of Commerce today announced that Holly was selected this recipient, and as I said, it will be presented tomorrow during the 11 to 1:30 p.m. luncheon. Ms. Holly Lee is the Chief of Workforce Development Strategies with the City of Charlottesville's Office of Economic Development, and she was nominated by Kay Monroe. According to Kay, Holly has played an integral part in creating community within our ranks and professions. From grassroots to governments, she continues to create and leverage collective conversations among a diverse citizenry, educational entities, and agencies that bring favorable and lasting results to the economic vitality of this locality. The CBDC Vanguard Award is named in honor of John F. Bell Senior, a respected business leader who established successful businesses during a time when society was not welcoming of people of different cultural backgrounds. Past award recipients include Eugene and Lorraine Williams, Ford Adiente Business Alliance, and Kay Monroe. Award criteria include someone who displays high business and personal integrity, makes significant contributions in the area of business diversity, is civically engaged, and develops other business leaders. And the luncheon itself gives attendees an opportunity to connect with the diversity of business professionals. So again, I think it's really wonderful that one of our own, Ms. Holly Lee, has been given the award. She's a tireless worker. She set up the growing opportunity programs. Mr. Matt Murphy is in the room. He was also a colleague. He is now in a different position right now with the City Council. But I do think we owe gratitude to Ms. Lee, and it's a moment to be proud of her achievements because she makes the city live up to its own aspirations.
Thank you. Just briefly, this morning, I read a proclamation that was signed by the mayor led by Mr. Alexander where today we, I won't read the full proclamation, but today will be known, and Mr. Alexander is recognized for creating "Close Your Mouth and Listen Day," AKA his SIM Day, for all citizens of Charlottesville. And his intention is to serve as a positive reminder for all citizens to become better communicators and effective listeners, help create a wholesome environment that encourages citizens to be respectful of other opinions, ideas, and thoughts, understand and accept individual differences, and through closing one's mouth and listening, all citizens can make positive life choices and become productive citizens. So he was joined by 100 students earlier this morning, and this is his little character, the SIM character that he asked me to just to show. That was the proclamation from earlier today. Mr. Signer.
Mr. Bellamy, you want to?
Oh, go ahead.
Do you have one?
Mine is a couple, a little long, so.
Go ahead.
With a heavy heart that I will present this plaque to Paige Rice, who's been our clerk for eight years. So I am Chief of Staff presently, so I'm gonna, I'll read it and then give it to you. So this is on behalf of City Council. In recognition of Paige Rice, thank you for your selfless dedication to the often thankless work of municipal government, including both high-visibility projects and equally important fostering collegiality and effectiveness among our professional staff. Our municipality is better as a result of your deep commitment to making Charlottesville the world-class city we strive to be. Charlottesville City Council, September 2018. We're sorry to see you go. We wish you the very best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
I have a proclamation here for Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and whereas September is known throughout the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding suicide, and whereas the health and well-being of our citizens is of the utmost importance, and whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, sexual orientation, income level, or religious background, and whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive human tragedies a family and community can experience, with more than 40,000 deaths and more than 500,000 attempts each year, and whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of all deaths in Virginia and the second leading cause of death among people ages 15 to 24, and whereas suicide has an everlasting impact on families who are left to process the loss of their loved ones and may increase the risk of suicide within the family unit, suicide prevention efforts should be encouraged, developed, and supported within the Charlottesville community. And whereas public awareness of suicide is the key to preventing further suffering and loss of life, and the risk of suicide can be reduced through awareness, education, and mental health treatment, all citizens are encouraged to take time to inquire about the well-being of family members, families, and neighbors, and every member of our community should be made aware that many individuals are silently fighting internal battles. Whereas kindness, compassion, empathy, understanding, a phone call, text message, or a hug can help an individual realize suicide is not the answer. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim September 2018 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Charlottesville, Virginia, and urge all citizens, businesses, health organizations, faith communities, mental health advocacy groups, and all others to work towards preventing, excuse me, prevention by raising awareness. As signed by our mayor Nakiah Walker for the City of Charlottesville. If we give a round of applause for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Is there someone here to accept this proclamation? Okay, so we will make sure we handle that. I had a couple other quick things, Vice Mayor Rice. One being, wanted to give some kudos to Mr. Murphy, as well as everyone who was involved with the Charlottesville Back to School Bash that took place in September. We didn't get a chance to fully acknowledge that, but we had close to 1,000 book bags and school supplies that were provided to the community on behalf of the City of Charlottesville, African American Passers Alliance, and several other community groups. It filled a huge need here within the community, so thank you for your service for that, sir. In addition to you, there were another group of brothers and sisters from a group called Dream Diamonds and Dream Clothing who also had a Back to School Bash at Tombsley Park in which they gave away about 300 book bags and school supplies. And there was another one at Forest Hills from a few community groups, which we also want to make sure that we're showing in the proper love and respect. So it's definitely a community effort in terms of making sure that our youngsters have what they need in regards to going back to school. So much appreciation and respect there. And then secondly, the last thing, Ms. Hill, I did want to say something to some of our students. At our last council meeting, I said something in regards to a young sister over there in regards to her wearing a beret on her head, which was completely inappropriate. So I want to look to you and let you know I sincerely apologize. There is a great level of respect that should be shown from this dais, and I think it's important for me to let you know that I have three daughters, and I never want them to think that a man should discredit them in the movement in which they're doing just because they may not like what they're saying. So I don't want you to ever think that that's what I'm trying to do and that looks apparently that's what I did. So to you, I sincerely apologize, not only to you, but everyone who was watching. So I hope you can accept my apology, and I appreciate the critiques. We may not always agree, but I think you all are pushing us to do things in which we don't normally think about. And I was at CBC this weekend, and I was like, we were pushing the elders on the federal level to do certain things, and it really made me think about y'all. Like, y'all are just pushing us to be better. We don't have to have the same tactics or agree on every method, but we got the same goal. So to you, well, that's cool too, but I appreciate you. That's cool, but I apologize to you and much respect to you and yours. That's all, Ms. Hill.
Mayor Hill, I do have one more announcement.
Okay.
Or acknowledgement, if I may.
Sure.
Many of you may know that this past weekend, we celebrated the Pride Festival, and it was extremely well-attended. It was full of great fun, and the only thing I can say is love. It, the emcee of the event walked down the boardwalk and said, "I love you, I love you, I love you, I love you, I love you." And it was pretty darn amazing. It was a wonderful feeling. So thank you, Pride Festival. Thank you to everyone who organized that event because it demonstrated, yes, there is strength in diversity, and it was also a heck of a lot of fun. So thank you very much.
All right, I invite Mr. Murphy to deliver the City Manager response to matters of the public from the August 20th council meeting.
I have four notes here for follow-up from our last meeting. I have Mr. Signer asked, is it legal in Virginia to directly elect the City Manager position as they do in the state of Maryland? City Attorney Blair investigated, and that is not currently legal in the state of Virginia. Mr. Mark Cavett asked a question about how many days' notice was required for a public meeting like the ones on Belmont Bridge, and had a complaint that six days was too short of notice. Actually, the requirement is three days, and of course, we want to exceed that whenever I have an issue here that I'm still holding that council would like to revisit what the August 4 changes were in CAT routes.
Yes.
But we don't have that on for tonight, and I'm pretty sure since it was brought to me by Mayor Walker that you want to do that at a meeting where she's here. And did some further investigation. Ms. Parker has asked us a couple times about was every space blocked off on the four sides of Friendship Court? And I have found that there were some cars parked there that day, and so I do want to acknowledge that here since we've had a lot of public discussion about it. So it does seem that we had signed a lot of spaces, but not in a way that every single space was not parked in, and so I want to make sure that we are acknowledging that Ms. Parker was correct about that.
Vice Mayor Hill may make a comment relative to Mr. Murphy's remarks. So thank you for that because I want to underscore the CAT question because I did attend a Five Phil Network Association meeting this past week, and that was a very big concern as to what was happening. I believe it was Route 4 on Cherry Avenue. So I, and that, and if you could also make sure that Ms. Carmelita Wood gets a follow-up on when we're talking about that, that would be much appreciated by the Five Phil Network Association and its members. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy.
Sir.
Can I say that the general position is open? So just for the public's knowledge and information, for the City of Charlottesville, we have an opening for our Albemarle Charlottesville Regional Jail Board Authority. So the city-appointed position is open on the City of Charlottesville website. You can visit the jails, excuse me, the boards and commissions webpage on the city website. Make sure you fill out an application, and we'll be reviewing those who would like to apply.
Next, we move on to community matters. This evening, we have nine who've signed up for matters for this time slot. We have each person speak for three minutes, and there'll be optional two minutes available for council to respond. We ask that you be in by sharing your name and your address, and the first speaker is Elliot Harding.
Elliot Harding, newly moved to the city limits, so I'm in Woodhaven neighborhood. I want to address two things today. The first coming from the comments of Dr. Rick Turner at the last meeting regarding the lack of diversity within the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office here. I want the council to consider doing something that the private sector does for law students before they go into a legal career, and that is developing a summer associate diversity program, having a specific grant to the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office to help find racial minorities or other members who are not fully represented among the bar. Think it would, doesn't come as much of a surprise that 95% of elected prosecutors are white throughout the country, so this is not a, just a city issue, this is a national issue. And for some perspective, summer programs are the most important for finding employment in the legal career, whether it's your first summer or your second summer. By creating this type of a program, it would increase the likelihood of employment in Charlottesville or surrounding localities, and even if they are able to find employment in Charlottesville and the surrounding localities, you could keep the program going in order to increase the pipeline to criminal law, whether that be in prosecution or defense. Down the road, that would probably lead to increased likelihood of folks running to become Commonwealth's Attorneys, and then hopefully become judges. And that's something that most people should realize is members who find their way to the bench have, a significant amount of them have prosecution experience, and that's because it exposes them to more trial experience, and that's necessary in litigation, whether you're in the private or the public sector. So with that being said, I would ask the council to consider that, consider what Dr. Turner mentioned at the last meeting. It would be a relatively cheap grant, given that you're probably just looking at one summer, one summer associate for two or three months. They don't have to come from UVA. There are a lot of other great law schools in the area that would be more than willing to send folks. A second thing I want to mention is affordable housing, and that is, not only does the city need it, and I hope that y'all can consider radically changing the zoning laws to allow for upzoning, but I would hope that this body and the other body that handles affordable housing can also consider the plight on affordable housing for members of our community like our teachers and our law enforcement. I would hope that the council could consider some type of a tax credit to relieve those burdens because you want law enforcement and you want teachers to be a part of your community so that they know what's going on. I know that there are folks working in both systems that live one to two, possibly three counties away, and at that point, you're no longer serving the community of interest. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding, just really briefly, Attorney Blair and I had a conversation today, or there's been ongoing conversations in regards to different things that the city can do as a whole to attract more diverse candidates and whatnot. This weekend, I had some conversations with folks from BOSA, which is the Black Law School Student Association, and they're very interested in working with us as a city as a whole to try and diversify our pool. So we're moving in that direction, but I do think your recommendations are definitely well-taken. I just don't want you to think we aren't doing anything.
Joshua Humphries.
I'm Joshua Humphries, and I live over in the Shamrock Road area, and I had a seizure back in August, and while I was basically moving some things around on my way home from, with some groceries, and then as part of the, what the seizure had caused and part of what had happened was I began to run toward one of the doors of the bus and began to bang on the door, according to the Charlottesville Transit. And what happens with a lot of epilepsy, and a lot of types of epilepsy, they can look like intoxication, they can look like mental illness. In fact, in a lot of very famous cases of epilepsy have people who have been previously diagnosed with mental illnesses who then become diagnosed with epilepsy as the symptoms worsen or other things happen. And so that's, I'm very grateful that the Charlottesville Transit has actually responded very well about this, and we're actually working on getting training for drivers and other folks like that. But another concern that kind of connects with that is to make sure that people do understand that epilepsy does have a lot of manifestations that does not look like the stereotypical tonic-clonic seizure, what used to be called in the old days the grand mal seizure. Most of them, 75 to 80% of them actually can be things like, where a person has what may feel like a mystical experience, or a person will begin to stagger and look rather drunk and fall down and start to drool and that sort of thing. In fact, that, those two in particular types are the two types that I have, and I've repeatedly been accused of mental illness or accused of intoxication and a variety of other things, but we've worked a lot with training and that sort of thing. And it'd be very helpful to try to get police and other folks to have advisors, and we have advisory commissions, to always have people who deal with disability issues who are briefed on these sorts of things like epilepsy and a whole variety of other disorders, including Tourette's Syndrome and other things of that ilk. Because unfortunately, that lack of understanding is very dangerous because when we don't understand those things, we may falsely accuse people of doing something that's malicious when they're in fact having a serious physical disability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries.
Couple comments, and thank you for coming in, Mr. Humphries. Our CAT staff has been speaking with Mr. Humphries. Our first training session for staff is actually tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. about this particular disorder, and again Thursday at 2:00. And it will be ongoing until all active drivers in CAT have received the training. It'll be part of our onboarding. Also, we'll be changing our response from supervisory staff. Usually, a supervisor responds only to accidents and incidents like that, but we're going to change our policy anytime we have an EMS call, CPD, CFD call, police, fire, sorry for the acronyms, we'll send out a supervisor from the Transit Center to be with the drivers and whatever individuals may need assistance until we have relief.
Great.
Thank you very, very much.
All right, Evan Brown.
Hey, good evening. I know it's been a while. It has been a while, and I know there have been a couple of news items, one of which is the announcement of the failure of the West Second Project due to financial concerns. Apparently, the developer wanted three summer homes, he can only get two, maybe? I don't know. But I think that is an interesting example of how we cannot rely on developers to provide or fix our affordable housing crisis, as most of these units were going to high-end, ultra-wealthy people with only a pittance of affordable housing off-site. And I know in a lot of these discussions of affordable housing, one of the main issues is that we need land, we need parcels, we need somewhere to develop these housing units. So I'm here asking council, huh, maybe we can use this land for affordable housing in some way, maybe not use it as a rich person's development for luxury apartments? And while we're on the subject of empty parcels or places that can be developed, I also would bring your attentions back to the Landmark Hotel. So as we all know, Landmark Hotel has been sitting there for, I don't know, 10, almost 10 years now, it's been there for a long time, and the current owner, Mr. Duberry, has, seems like, hey, has no intention of actually developing or completing this project anytime in the near future. So I would ask the council to direct the Director of Neighborhood Services to start the spotlight abatement process, and for those who don't know, a blighted property means that the property is, for any reason of dilapidation, overcrowding, lack of ventilation, light and sanitary facilities, deleterious land use, or any combination of these or other factors are detrimental to the safety, health, or welfare of the community. I would propose that the Landmark, the currently undeveloped Landmark Hotel fits these criteria, especially in terms of health, given that almost anytime downtown at night, I can see rats scurrying to and from the Landmark Hotel. Obviously, it's a health concern. Obviously, it's a safety concern, given that in the past, debris has fallen from this undeveloped property. So I would ask the city to essentially kick Duberry and to actually do something with this, or start this spotlight abatement process in which if Duberry does not fix this blight, which is the looming tower of steel there, then the city, at least by my understanding, has the ability to potentially acquire that property and in order to fix this blight and recoup their costs when they resell the property. I could be wrong, but please correct me if I am. But this goes back to my original thought that we have these huge, we have these significant parcels of land that are currently owned by wealthy developers who either realize that they are not worth their investment for whatever reason, or just waiting for things to get a little cheaper before they develop. While in the meantime, we're in a crisis of needing affordable housing. So I'd really ask council to actually do something and think creatively about these particular plots of land, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Blair? I don't know, I know we had kind of looked at this through a different lens last year, but is it any way in which some of the methods that were just brought up, could we maybe analyze or look into that in regards to the Landmark?
Sure, we can take a look at that again as to what is legally per- We can take a look at that again as to what is legally permitted. Again, there's probably fiscal costs associated, then as well as to the speaker talking about the acquisition of a property as well, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Francesca Grazzioli. Myra Anderson.
My name is Myra Anderson. I live at 2517 Hjalik Road. I wanted to take a few minutes to speak about accountability, but before I get there, I want to talk about mental health for a minute, and particularly how it's prevalent in the African-American community. African-Americans are more prevalent to experience mental health problems, but they're also less likely to seek help, and a lot of that has to do with internal stigma within the African-American community, but it also has to do with external stigma in that particularly African-Americans feel more comfortable seeking services from people of color, people that they can relate to culturally. That is a fact, and I'm sure if you were able to survey any African-American physicians in town, you would find that a great number of the patients that they see are African-Americans. Now, how does this tie into accountability? Well, I'm speaking on mental health particularly because I was just at a board meeting for the Board of Directors at Regenton, speaking to the fact that they do not have any African, any African-American therapists there at all. This is a very, very, very serious problem. It's a problem because we are not, people of color are not seeking help because they don't have anyone they can culturally- don't have anyone they can culturally relate to. It's also a problem because if you are not a person of color, sometimes the perception and how you see certain things is different than someone telling the story as a person of color. After everything that happened last year, there are people who are suffering from racial trauma, okay? And it's very hard when you want to go speak to someone and the person you speak to is the exact same color as the person you were traumatized. And that's the only choice that you have in public mental health. Now, why am I talking about this here in addition to talking about it at Regenton is because you give Regenton money every year, every year they come and seek money from you, and it seems like there's not too many questions asked about giving them an amount of money. They're not serving the diverse needs of the city, obviously, if they're comfortable with the fact that there's not one single therapist there of color. So you have absolutely no choice. So what I propose to you, the next time that you have to allot money to Regenton or how it goes, is to perhaps put some stipulations in there or even ask more questions. How many people of color are you serving? And it's not just African-Americans, broaden that to see any minority group. Are their needs being met? You're giving them money for the residents of the city, but yet some of them are not being able to have their needs met in a way that they feel comfortable. One of my friends, who is a client at Regenton, was the neighbor of Jason Kessler, and she has been greatly traumatized. And the only person she can talk to is her peers. My time is up. I hope that you will seriously consider the words that I've said.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hill, I may say something and I'm not sure how we can begin that, but I think if Mr. Murphy could begin a conversation with the relatively new director of Regenton, I think that would be extremely valuable. Do we have any appointments to the Regenton Board?
Absolutely. I believe many, many years ago, I served on that board. And I believe that the council appoints four of the members, as I recall, but certainly Ms. Rice can probably pull that up pretty quickly. Ms. Anderson's certainly striking on a very important issue. I can say, what, fifteen to twenty years ago, when I was on that board, Regenton funded the Sankofa Center specifically for this purpose in partnership with MACA. And as Ms. Anderson said, because of stigma in the African-American community, despite hiring African-American therapists, people didn't come out and it eventually folded. I know this was a big passion project for Dr. Holly Edwards, and she did a lot to bring attention to this issue. So whatever can be done to provide more behavioral health services to all the people in Charlottesville would be certainly helpful.
So, Mr. Murphy, I'm sorry, what were you saying, Ms. Rice?
There's four.
Four from us? How many people are on the board as a whole?
A lot more than that.
It's a very large board, I think close to twenty people in all, but I don't remember exactly.
So, I know as you alluded to, Dr. Edwards, the Sankofa Center, it meant a whole lot to her. I wonder, is it possible, similar to how we have meetings with other boards and commissioners like we've been talking about, Housing Authority and so forth, because this has been such a passionate topic for a while now, could we get an update from the Regenton Board or even have a joint session of some sort, maybe a small one, it doesn't have to be a session, but we'd like to hear from them, what are their efforts in regards to retaining or obtaining and recruitment of minority counselors, specifically African-American mental therapists? And is there some way in which we can assist with that, whether that be through advertising, whether that be from monetary assistance or whatever the case may be? So I think Ms. Anderson's point is well taken and it seems like sometimes we just run in a circle. This is similar to the issue of black teachers. It's like we say, well, we need this population, and the answer is, well, we can't find them. And then that just seems to be, that's it. But if we're creative in the way in which we go about recruiting them, we may be able to find a path to get more in. So I think if Ms. Anderson would be willing to assist us in some capacity with different ideas, which she's shaking her head she may be, and maybe we can talk with Regenton as well.
Yeah, I mean, if you might entertain a friendly amendment for augmentation from the manager. I would say that maybe if I ask Ms. Dimick to bring you all a work session on the work of the Community Mental Health and Wellness Coalition, of which Regenton is a member, and talk about their work plan and, you know, maybe, you know, the Health Department is there and so it'll tie back into MAP, because one of the primary goals of MAP is about accessibility for low-income and minority populations to both health and behavioral health services. I think we could probably tie something together for you there and address all these topics in one session, if it's the will of council to try and get that on the calendar.
I would be fine with that. I just don't want us to get away from the point. I think this is something, I mean, even these ladies in the front have brought up, we've heard this on several occasions, like people, the only place they can afford to go is Regenton and there's no one who looks like them. So in that work, I'm not saying this is what you're saying, I'm just requesting that in that session, if that was to be, we need to make sure that we have an emphasis on whatever Regenton needs to do and however we can assist to attract and recruit and then hire more African-Americans, specifically, mental health professionals, it's definitely needed.
I'm not losing the importance of that thread and I would, you know, I think if we bring in that group, we also get a chance to highlight for you work of other groups like the Women's Initiative, who are embedded in West Haven with free counseling every Monday, who have culturally competent therapists and minority therapists. So I think there's other things that we can weave in there if we kind of expand just a little bit.
I'm in support of that.
There's fourteen total, board members representing different areas, and their next board meeting is October eighth. And also, it's interesting to note that they state on their website that there was an ad hoc diversity and consumer community relations meeting that took place today at noon. So.
So I think in terms of advertise, I mean, were you aware of that, Ms. Anderson? The ad hoc group? Were you aware of the ad hoc diversity meeting that Ms. Rice just?
That was at the last board meeting, I spoke to the last.
Yeah, I saw the news clip. So I mean, from an advertising perspective, it's important for the community.
It suggests to me that Ms. Anderson's comments at the last Regenton meeting had an impact, but it's too bad that it wasn't advertised more fully.
Or the meeting time, I mean, in the middle of the day, most people are at work. But that's another conversation I think we can have with them. As well as Ms. Anderson, I look forward to us working together in terms of addressing this issue.
All right, next we have Larry Scott. Mr. Scott? All right, Marsha Guyer.
Well, Ms. Marsha is coming. Mayor Walker says hello to everyone. She's watching remotely from France. She has a lot of comments and I'm sure she'll put them on Facebook.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Marsha Guyer. I live in Charlottesville on Pear Tree Lane. I was looking into affordable housing, the crisis for lower wealth Charlottesville families using 2016 government statistics to get at the demographics of income distribution and household makeup in Charlottesville. I was astonished, by the way, at the, how high the average is and how high it goes up. This is a much wealthier community than I had realized. I found that there's a factor of, that's unfair about eligibility for property tax relief for elderly and disabled homeowners and the rental relief program for the elderly and permanently disabled. And I'm bringing that to your attention tonight. It surprised me to find out that a smaller percent of Charlottesville residents age sixty-five and over, like myself, have incomes below the poverty level, ten percent compared to twenty, twelve point four percent for all families. In households where there are children under age five, that is non-schoolage, the poverty rate is almost twenty-two percent. The poverty rate is the highest for women-headed households for children, with children age, under age five. That's forty-eight and a half percent, nearly, and nearly as high for women-headed households with children under eighteen. There's a huge difference between the low end of impoverished households, ten percent for seniors, and the high end, forty-something percent for women-headed households, headed mostly by women in their early and middle years of adulthood. But the tax relief and rental subsidy, rental relief subsidies target the age group with the lowest number of households that need these subsidies. A little more detail on that. The American Fact Finders Selected Housing Characteristics Report for 2016, and I know you've got more up-to-date stats than this, this is just what I found when I went out online. That report lists housing as about fifty-eight percent renter occupied, forty-two percent owner occupied. And part of that renter occupancy is student housing. And I didn't find out how much of the total is the students. When owner-occupied housing, well, within owner-occupied housing, two-thirds have a mortgage and one-third have no mortgage. The median cost of housing for those one-third of homeowners with no mortgage was four hundred fifty-four dollars a month in 2016. The age distribution of homeowners with no mortgage is not listed, but it's obvious that older homeowners are much more likely to have paid off their twenty- or thirty-year mortgage than younger homeowners. So about ten percent of homeowners with no mortgage pay thirty-five percent or more of their housing, household income for housing costs. This does not mean that they're necessarily in poverty, they may just have cute trousers. So this is the least housing affordability burdened category in our city. The median cost was fifteen thousand seventy-six dollars a month for the two-thirds of homeowners with a mortgage. About twenty percent of these households pay more than thirty-five percent of their income.
Thank you.
May I continue?
How much more do you have?
About another minute or so, I don't know.
This one she needs to hear later, so listen.
Okay.
She can have my time.
It's fine. She can keep going.
So the median cost for renters was listed as a thousand thirty dollars and almost forty-five percent paid more than thirty-five percent of their household income for housing costs. Now, not all of those ten, twenty, or forty-five percent of Charlottesville households that paid thirty-five percent or more for their housing costs have the level of low wealth that could qualify them for financial relief. Many, but not all. Bottom line, eligibility for the existing relief programs is restricted to low-wealth seniors and totally disabled households. But the biggest part of Charlottesville's low-wealth household who are burdened by housing costs above thirty-five percent of their income is families with children under eighteen, most especially women-handed households with children. Mothers are especially, are mostly in their early and middle adult years, not the grandparent generation. Poverty is, to a great extent, the result of only the husband, or if there is no husband, nobody being able to work due to the lack of reliable and affordable childcare. The amount of subsidies is, you know, quite substantial. It could make a big difference for meeting household basic needs. The subsidy, as the regulations are written now, they appear to be infected by age discrimination. In the 1960s, seniors were financially lagging group. In Charlottesville, fifty years later, that situation has reversed. These rules for both programs are at the state level of regulation. Charlottesville would need to either get waivers to drop the over-sixty-five age restriction or go to court arguing for the elimination of age discrimination. I respectfully submit this issue to council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, do you have copies?
She sent it to us via email.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Hill, I would seriously like to consider that for our next submittal for a legislative packet in November, to do research to find out what is permissible at the local level in terms of adjusting those age brackets. I do know, and when I sent everybody before a housing work session, a memo that included certain government programs and initiatives that we could look into, and one of them was a tax-freeze district, which is, I understand, is allowed by Virginia law. And that would be something that we could apply to our lower-income census tax. And then there's the property circuit, property tax circuit breaker program that New York City has, that once a homeowner's property tax exceeds a certain percentage of gross income, the homeowner is entitled to tax relief. So it's in a way, it's like a graduated tax based on income, not based on age. So they are both items that I had included in this memo. I don't know when we will talk about that memo, since we did not get to it at the last work session, but it is extremely, extremely important and I think, Ms. Mercer, did I get your last name right?
Guyer.
MacGyver, I'm sorry. It was Marcia, sorry, I combined things, for bringing that to our attention.
Jeff Vogel. Rosia Parker.
Good afternoon, Rosia Parker, City of Charlottesville. Wes, you remember you congratulated me on the, and me on the neighborhood leadership? They did not take care of what they were supposed to take care of, which is supposed to be lighting at the bottom of Eighth Street and Main Street that still has not been taken care of. And Mr. Mike, you're over the chief of police. I am so tired of her telling lies, saying that they have protected us, which they did not. We had a community meeting with her in West Haven. Our response to the last thing was we had to have a safety plan. We was worried about somebody coming through there antagonizing our community and shooting at our children. For us to say, for her to say, we don't have a safety plan, she might have increased the police riding around, but she told us that the police was going to be walking and on bicycles. That never took place. So I am so tired of her saying that she's doing something, so I need her to take the accountability of what she's not doing. Like, and I thank you for saying that I was right, but that goes to show you, she's not doing her job. And also, when is she going to fulfill the complaints that's already been in and she has not responded to in thirty days?
Ms. Parker. Mr. Murphy, a note. Mr. Murphy, in regards to the lighting situation, I thought that we had it squared away. Is that not, because she's, Ms. Parker said.
Yeah, I need to, I wasn't aware that the lighting wasn't in place. I'm aware that the crosswalk that we had talked about has been installed, so I need to go double-check on the lighting piece. I really don't know. Eighth and.
It's supposed to be a reflector that's supposed to be put on the cones so that the people can see on either side of the road of the walkway. And he said that was supposed to have been done. He was supposed, I mean, he said it was two weeks for the standards to have a crosswalk. Yeah, so he was supposed to have did that within, what, a week or so? Two weeks. Because I had this turn with me when I was having a conversation with these three.
So reflectors on cones at Eighth and Main is what you mean by the, I just want to make sure I'm getting it right.
There's supposed to be lighting on so you can see that the people can stop when it's dark and see that there's a crosswalk.
Got it. Thank you.
But the crosswalk was going to put in though, right?
The crosswalk, the standards are already in.
We just need the lighting.
No, but this is the, the further, right there by males, right there, as you cross that crosswalk.
The back way to West Haven, I know exactly what you're talking about, yeah?
Thank you.
That's the end of those who have signed up. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak? We have a handful of slots that were open this evening. We have a handful of slots that were open this evening.
I have a two-part question for you guys. I actually sent the email too. You probably haven't gotten it yet. But this is a two-part question that I would like for you guys to do a little bit of research on. During the years that blacks occupied Vinegar Hill, I would like to know the real estate and property tax revenue that was received by them? Like, how much money did the city receive in taxes from the black businesses and the black residential area when Vinegar Hill was occupied by blacks before demolition? I would also like to know how much of that money went back into that community before demolition? And then I would also like to know the amount of tax revenue received in that same area today from resident, residential property and property taxes today? We're gonna do a little compare and contrast, and I hope y'all get a little history lesson here. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Before the next speaker comes up, Ms. Hudson, is there a timeframe in what you're looking for?
As soon as possible.
Like, uh, next meeting?
Before your request, you have a certain amount of time to get it through.
Yeah, but I mean, did you want it like back at a council meeting? Or you just wanted to, you submit it via the foyer or?
I would like to discuss it at a council meeting. I think that's information the world needs enough. Let's put it on the record. I would like to record it in case I gotta go back and get minutes.
Is that possible, Mr.? No. Yeah, Mr.?
I mean, all foyer requests are dependent upon the notion that there is a responsive record, right? And so whether there is a record of what the tax revenues were at that timeframe? And I assume that we have to go back and figure out, what are we talking about? In the ten years prior to urban renewal? And the, I mean, what's the, just help me frame your question, Ms. Hudson.
Be more detailed, but all in all, I wanna know what tax revenue was received from black people? How much did the city put back into the community? Which I guarantee you, I promise you, a lot of this information, you're probably not gonna be able to find it. Because y'all didn't keep record of it, because it's pertaining to black people. But I wanna know what's being received today from that same area and how much money is going into the city? So we can start some type of something for y'all to do something more for black people in this town, whether it be you taking money, creating or building some type of land bond to fix these houses in Hardy Drive. You got a house in Hardy Drive that got a hole in the roof. So why not move everybody out that one row and start redeveloping that one row? And then you can just keep doing it and doing it and doing it. You keep talking about a design plan for affordable housing or how you're gonna redevelop Hardy Drive. Forget a design plan, design it just like the standard in the flats. Make it all one floor living, one, two, three bedrooms. It's a bunch of designs you guys could copy to accommodate the people in Hardy Drive. It makes no sense how those people are living over there. I just want y'all to walk, you know, it's enough empty apartments y'all can spend a night over there. Go home and spend the night and see what it's like to live in there. And go in the summertime and spend a night with no air conditioner. Like, it's just ridiculous how y'all disrespect us in this town. Like, seriously. And I'm not saying that just to say that. Like, I'm saying it from a research standpoint that I have done. I don't need no mic. I've done tons of research. Going to the library, going to the UVA library, going to the Historical Society, calling different people that's up, up ninety years and above. Like, the way y'all disrespect people of color in this town, it makes no sense. You got three councils sitting up there with a hidden agenda. And you know I'm saying this with a lot of passion, because I feel like you might do a good job these next couple of months. I hope that you would do a good job and make these people do something. Because all these people that come here to make money and then they run out and leave once they make enough money, we tired of that. Like, you have to give black people some damn space. We contributed to every bit of penny that the city has made, and we have nowhere to go. We have nowhere to go. And everywhere that we do have to go, we gotta face police everywhere we go somewhere. Five cops riding through Hardy Drive in thirty minutes is absolutely disturbing. You don't even got five cops riding through UVA all the time. Like, y'all re deal with so much. And then y'all wonder why we come down here yelling and fussing. I'm telecussing y'all out. I'm sick of it. Like, I am absolutely sick of it. If you wanna do something about the affordable housing problem, then do it. Because every last one of y'all campaign was on affordable housing. If you can't tackle the problem, get to hell out of council. You should not be there. But y'all don't wanna do nothing about it because your friend of a friend of a friend of a friend own a development company and somebody else owns something else. This is putting on friends. You putting friends on. Your friend making money, you getting paid under the table, just like the Downtown Business Association got all that money. And you had a friend that owned this marketing company, and she did all the advertising. Yo, stop it. Stop it. Give black people some money. I would like the same amount of money for black businesses, the very few that we got. Can we get that? Can we get that? I mean, birds chirping, I don't hear nothing. How about that? Like, we have got, y'all gotta, y'all gotta start showing that y'all, y'all really care. Because like, y'all three, that's why y'all sitting there looking crazy in the face. Because y'all know that y'all don't give a damn. Y'all don't care. Y'all really don't care. Y'all do not care.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Ain't no thank you. I'm not done. Y'all don't care. Start caring. Start caring. Start caring. This is why this stuff needs to be recorded, because everybody need to know how y'all sit up here and lie. Y'all lie too much. Now you can continue. You got your job. Sorry, Mike. I just need to get that out. The email be more detailed, but I would like to discuss it in council.
Okay.
Continue.
Hi, I just wanted to ask a question regarding.
Do you mind just bear the record to your name and?
Angeline Resner, City of Charlottesville. I just want to ask a question actually regarding sanctuary cities. I know that there is not a single sanctuary city in the state of Virginia. Right? There's, there's these, oh, we're friendly to immigrant cities, Alexandria, Chesterfield, and Fairfax. But there's not a single sanctuary city in Virginia. And I would like to know how to start that process. I know because of the deal in law, it requires that it go to the senate first. Is that correct?
The general assembly.
The general assembly, yes. Right. And since we're supposed to be so inclusive, I figured what better way to start than right here in the City of Charlottesville proposing that we become a sanctuary city?
So, we discussed that, I'm not gonna say at length, but, well, yeah, I would say at length, last year.
Right.
In regards to a sanctuary city. Here's one of the issues with us being that, so with the potential threat. I'm sorry.
You lose your federal funding.
Yeah, so.
Yes, I know that.
Being a city of our size, well, just so everyone knows.
Oh, okay.
So as you alluded to, the federal funding plays a huge role, or it plays a role in our budget. In a city like, a city of our size, we're a lot different from like Seattle, Atlanta, things of that nature, because their budget is so much larger than ours. If we were to lose our federal funding, if I'm not mistaken, I think what Ms. Seiko was talking about last year was like forty million dollars.
Mm-mm. I think it's like twenty, twenty-six million.
Okay, so if it's twenty.
Not very much, considering that we have all of these wealthy developers here, so, in Charlottesville. So.
But twenty-six million dollars.
We can find the money, right? Right, we can find the money. Because, I, I'll let you speak in just a second, because, I won't let you speak, but just give me one second.
No, I know.
You know I'm passionate. So, what I am, with, with ICE and this jail board meeting thing taking place, and, you know, you guys are going back in to discuss it on November eighth, is that the date? Okay, great. So November eighth, everybody come out to the Albemarle County Regional Jail to board meeting.
Get there early.
Very early, because it's hot outside, but hopefully not in November.
Twelve?
Twelve.
Twelve o'clock, please. So with that, so in speaking with people who were there, it was discovered that what the jail does is, say they have an immigration, an immigrant, a human being, who's being held there at the jail, and they're released. You know, they're ready to go, call their family member. ICE is contacted forty-eight hours before their release date?
In some cases, yeah. But they're, they're notified right before the person is released.
Right. So my issue is, you're having, so, that's an issue. That's just an issue in general. Like, ICE is a federal agency. You have no obligation to deal with them. You have no obligation under, you don't.
Right.
You don't. If a, a city like Atlanta can stop informing ICE of immigration status, Charlottesville can stop informing ICE of people's immigration status for traffic tickets. For, for child support, for anything like that. Come on, seriously? But yet you, but yet, you're, we have sister cities in other countries. How does that look? Like, right? We have sister cities, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, of course. But what I'm saying is, is this needs to be revisited sooner rather than later. Sanctuary cities.
Okay.
Mr. Blair, did you have anything else?
You want me to take, Mr. Murphy, or you want to?
I don't know if Mr. Blair wanted to just give a perspective from the legal side.
Sure.
Just obviously, as, as Speaker and Dr. Bell may have acknowledged, there is a federal component as well to funding. But, but obviously, the council is within its parameters to place that on its legislative agenda for the General Assembly in twenty nineteen.
So.
No, we're not saying no. So what we have.
They're not saying no, they want to.
We would have to take, put it in our legislative packet. And then we would have to take our delegate, Toscano, as well as Senator Creedes, will have to present that at the General Assembly meetings in January. And then they would have to get approval from the General Assembly for us to officially move forward.
It's not complicated.
Those steps can be taken.
The steps can be taken. Like, it's not like, it's not like something you cannot do. Like, it's not like, oh, we're a Commonwealth, we can't do that. So, or, you know, whatever the case may be.
The General Assembly may not grant us that permission.
Right.
You're saying at least take the steps, to put it on the packet.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter if they're going to or not. The point is, is to have the initiative to at least try.
Right.
If you don't have the initiative to at least try, ICE, ICE detention centers are inhumane.
Agreed.
What they are doing to human beings is unnecessary. It is white supremacy.
Agreed. So I wanna.
There are children, fi- fi- over five hundred and something odd children. I think it's now thirteen hundred children in ICE detention centers without their parents because they, they were seeking asylum from countries where they could be murdered, put into drug trafficking, all of those situations. And, and now they're being molested in these detention centers. Thank you. Because I was getting to that. But this, it needs to be done. It needs to be done.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hill, if I may add something. It is my understanding that Legal Aid has filed a suit against, I'm not sure which level of government or which court level, but in support of, of, well, against the detention past the, the legal requirement of jail time. And I was wondering if this council would be interested in exploring, I'm not sure if the right phrase is, an amicus brief? To join in with the Legal Aid Society to, to, on that score? Because it, it does seem like that, that is another avenue that was, that has potential.
So, on a legal aid.
Can?
Go ahead, because I can tell you.
Can?
Go ahead. Who's gonna talk? You should go.
I was just gonna add one other piece to the Legal Aid. When this came up after the Muslim ban, the attempt was, was first announced, one of the things that, that City Council did was we made a contribution from our strategic fund to Legal Aid after we were briefed about these legal difficulties in Virginia. And I think it was ten thousand dollars. I would really like to know, get a report what they did. Because it was going to be for helping refugees and immigrants with their legal cases. And that was something we thought we could do, was to help finance the legal work that was being done to these popu- to the population, for the population in Virginia and in our locality. So we, we should, I don't think we ever got a report from them about that investment in what they were doing. So I would, I'd like to get that as well, because we, that's, that's another path.
So the, then the issue becomes, after their release, say you have that whole Legal Aid package, it's fine. That's, that's great. But what are we doing about it now when they're at the jail? They're being, ICE is being called, you know, right there. They get taken away, their families are coming, risking their lives, you know, to come and pick up their loved one from jail, and they're being escorted out through the back door to ICE.
So there's, there's three specific pieces in regards to what you said. Mr. Murphy and myself are the, well, we're two of the four city representatives on the jail board. We literally have been fighting for this since January. So our initial meeting in January, we requested that we put ICE detentions and, excuse me, ICE notifications on the agenda. So we had to go through that process. We were working with Legal Aid members and, and members of Cimboderos and others. We got that on the agenda to review the policy. The current policy that is on place for the Albemarle Charlottesville Regional Jail Board, which includes Albemarle, Charlottesville, and Nelson County. The current policy is that, one, by federal mandate, ICE is notified as soon as an undocumented individual is brought into the facility. All right, so the policy states that, they have to be, federal policy states that they have to be notified at least once, right? So they're notified on the front end. The follow-up policy that the jail board has is that ICE will be, also be notified upon the person being released or once it's known when their release date is going to be. So that can be by phone, by email. More times than not, it's by phone. The policy that we were fighting for since January is to have that changed. Now, the issue is that we are, one jurisdiction, fighting, not fighting, but we're debating amongst a group that's with us, Albemarle, and Nelson. Well, we brought up, not only in January, but literally every meeting since January is for us to have the policy changed, in which ICE isn't notified after an individual, an undocumented individual is released. That was initially voted down, well, we had one meet, the meeting in January. It was then put off so that we could have more information come in. We had representation from ICE. Mr. Murphy and myself and Law &amp; Tufts, we presented all this information, as well as the individuals from Legal Aid, about why ICE isn't needed. They took a vote then. We were outvoted. We lost the vote, six, four? If I'm not mistaken?
Okay, so it's twenty-two.
Mr. Murphy? So the vote was somewhat, but we lost the vote the first time. Then we were able to get it back on the agenda again for us to have more information, because there were some things that were left out. Mr. Murphy brought up the fact that ICE wasn't using a measuring, a proper measuring tool in terms of how they're analyzing the individuals who they're saying may be dangerous to the community or whatnot, right? So we had that portion come back. We had all of that information, not this meeting, but the last meeting. And then we were supposed to take a vote during this meeting. It was very clear, at our meeting last Thursday, rather, it was very clear that we weren't going to have the votes in order for the policy to be changed. Now, our Commonwealth attorney, Joe Patania, said he's fine with he making the call to ICE if need be, which means that we won't have to follow the policy. So we were advocating locally as a city that we wouldn't follow the policy, but we have to get full agreement from the board. And during the meeting on Thursday, because we saw we couldn't even get the votes to be able to change the policy at all, nor for us to be able to just do it our way at Charlottesville, we were trying to talk about a compromise of sorts, just to try to get some kind of way for us, these, for ICE to not be notified. That compromise included four different things. We got a briefing, or a memo, rather, from Joe Patania that stated he saw that most undocumented individuals get picked up for four main things. One, loitering, driving with suspended license or driving without a license, excuse me. Mr. Murphy had to correct me on that. So loitering, driving without a license, public drunk, public intoxication, and then a civil matter of child support. So what we were asking for a compromise is if, well, what about for these four misdemeanor, or these three misdemeanors in this civil matter, you don't notify ICE? Just, those are first offenses, those are misdemeanors or whatnot, don't notify them. We were seeing that even with that, the remaining members of the board, who are, I have no qualms with saying, very conservative in nature, the remaining members of the board didn't even want to go with that. So we were able to have the vote put off until November, in which we're going to then have to subsequently have another conversation about it. So when you bring up like the fact that we need to be doing things to fight ICE, like, I promise you, literally, we are doing everything and trying to use every tactic that we can to get the policy changed, to prolong the point, so that we can try to get more information to convince our other board members, but it's difficult. Charlottesville, we appoint, we have four members. Albemarle has four members, and Nelson has three members. If the four of us, well, not even all four of our members at the time were in agreeance, three of our four members from the city were in agreeance, in agreeance. At the meeting Thursday, it seems like we may have had one or two more, but we still would have lost. Which is why we said, let's hold this off until the next meeting so that we could try to figure out how to get more information. So believe you me, that's a long story and that's all of it. But we are trying our hardest to stop ICE.
Thank you.
But we're in a juris, we're in a jail board that's not, that doesn't consist just of us.
Right. Now, and then, so do you think it would be, you know, even, even taking the steps to apply as a sanctuary city as just Charlottesville?
Somebody was listening. All right, man.
So even, even to apply for, you know, going through the steps which you said that you would be willing to take and that you would place that on an agenda of such, um, in a certain timeframe?
Legislative package.
Yeah, legislative package. Is it January, right?
Well, we have to put it together in November.
We pull it together in November.
So you'll put it together in November and then you'll have it ready by January?
For the General Assembly.
Okay.
It's one of many things that, yeah.
That's fine, but as long as it's one.
So the question, the question has to be.
As long as it's on there. I mean, that, I mean, it's important.
So we, I know we have to go, but just, the question, the question in hand is, is if we choose to do that, because ICE pretty much knows, they, they, their state, the head of this state ICE person was at the meeting, uh, the representatives are there, they're very clear that Charlottesville, we don't rock with ICE. We don't want you here. It's no, we don't, we don't want anything to do with you. However, the issue becomes is that, I think for last year, from the city, there were only eight individuals picked up, if I'm not mistaken. The large majority of them come from Albemarle County, the undocumented people who get, uh, who picked up. So one thing, one of the things that we fear is, well, I can't say we, I can only speak for myself, one of the things I fear is if we take an even bolder stance in saying, because we've already told them, we don't rock with you at all. If we tell them again, look, we're gonna be a sanctuary city and completely to hell with y'all, are, is that gonna have an unintended consequence on our neighbors in the county? And specifically in Southwood?
Well, then we build more.
Is that gonna put a bigger target on that community?
Bring him in. Like.
All right, we have, we have to move on. Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just giving you the information.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Don Gavitt.
If you're undocumented, city government cannot help you.
Um, let me ask you before I get started, how many slots do you have left?
Um, three.
Okay, good. All right. And you may not want to hear, but I'm gonna go right back on the, on the sister's back and piggyback what she was just saying. You mentioned that there's a slot available right now on the board, on the ACRJ board?
Yes.
Okay. I think it's important that the citizens of Charlottesville know, first of all, where the council stands on this issue and also that you will go through an incredible vetting process before making that appointment to bring on who I assume would be a voting member to go on the board, on the jail board, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. That you go through an incredible vetting process to make sure that we're putting someone in place on, in that position that will indeed uphold what it is that the city stands for, what we say we stand for and what it is that we want from that individual.
Thank you.
My name is Gloria Beard and I'm a resident of the city. And the last time we had a meeting, I signed up on the wrong sheet so I didn't get to speak. So the first thing I have on my agenda, it's been talked about so many times, is affordable housing. Now, I'm very concerned about the people in Hardy Drive. I've been here forty-four years. This problem with Hardy Drive has been ongoing ever since I've been a resident of Charlottesville. I'm not understanding why they don't even have central air after all these years, you all. They building big houses, apartments costing a thousand dollars for one bedroom. Why do these people have to live like this? One woman I know for a fact, she has a mold detector in her apartment. It's always high. This woman goes foulish, she shots. You, you know, the mold can, I'm, I'm retired from the hospital, so I have some kind of a medical background. Mold can get in your lungs and kill you. Do people not understand this?
I know.
And then the people down in, in Crescent Hall, that's another story. Those people, honey, you wouldn't like to live like that if it was you. None of you. You wouldn't want to live that way. I came up poor, so I know what any, you know, lapidated house look like. So some, come on, people, it's, I know good and well you all can do something about these people. Don't let people suffer. This is Charlottesville, most of these people, just because they live in low income, doesn't mean they wouldn't work. I worked all my life. I lived in Gas Square for eleven years. I worked. Took care of three, raised three sons with the grace of God. Got eight grandkids and two great-grandchildren. But I worked. So don't, you can't say, well, these people ain't worth it because they, you don't see nothing. People down there are all, I'm not, some of them worked, believe me, I know them. Now, another problem I have is gentrification. And I think I put, I stated this the last time I went to, I came, excuse me, I talk so fast because I'm, I get excited what I'm speaking about. So gentrification. I spoke at the last housing meeting. Now, if I left my neighborhood today or tomorrow, I couldn't afford to come back. Do you know what prices they put on those houses once they sell them? It don't make sense. And I know for a fact, I investigate and everything. I mean, I just keep, I keep on top of stuff. I might say here and be quiet, but you don't think I'm not thinking the whole time I'm listening? So where are the people going when they move out the neighborhoods? I don't see some of those people that I knew forty-four years ago. Granted, some of them are dead, but where are they going? If they go to, okay, if they do go to Albemarle County, some don't even drive. If they, old as I am, I can't see at night. And one last thing, because the bell's getting ready to ring, is to disrespect the, my mom's the city council. The last meeting I was at, they made Nakaya feel so bad and I was like, you, this stuff shouldn't be airing with us. It should be with you all. It made me feel like it, it's like, it's always voting two against three all the time. To the public, it looked racist to me because it's always West and Nakaya and y'all three. So then, if I'm at home on TV watching this, the first thing I'm gonna say, they are against the black ones that's on the city council. It bothers me, it looks racist, y'all. It looks that way to us. I don't want y'all to watch it on TV sometimes if y'all not agreeing with West and Nakaya. Nakaya's not a dumb person. I remember Nakaya when I first came here. She was, she's an activist and she speaks. She, she, she has discernment, she's got sense. She's not a dumb black woman. Don't set her in the background like she don't count. Everybody in this room mostly wanted her on the council. Y'all even started it to pick her as mayor. All she wanted to become was a, a city council person. She didn't ask to become the mayor, they asked her, too. You all did too. Give her a break, you all. Respect this woman. She's not a dummy. Don't set her on the shelf, please. It bothers me. I might have a granddaughter that runs for city council or president or whatever, but you gotta respect us, honey. This has to stop. Thank you.
So we've, we've prioritized a work session with CRHA and I guess PHA possibly in combination, depending on the scope.
Yes.
But it seems like, obviously, that we all recognize it, talking about the redevelopment of our public housing is one of the top priorities and really understanding where CRHA is in that process and what we can do to support that.
Yes. So we'll be awarding, officially awarding a RFP, we being the Housing Authority, officially awarding a request for proposal next Monday, correct? Ms. Rosie?
Next Monday at the Housing Authority meeting at six o'clock. The redevelopment committee has been working on that, so we'll be making that announcement.
Mr. Murphy?
Redevelopment committee meeting tomorrow at twelve o'clock at West Haven, if I'm not mistaken.
Can you say what the scope of that RFP is, Dr. Bell?
So the, for those listening, thank, yeah, looking at developers to be able to redevelop on a site. I don't know if I'm at liberty to say what site. So I'm being told I can't say which site.
We are trying to relocate, but what we're trying to do, we're talking about is to eligible on Crescent Hall.
Yeah. The priority is removing those. Yeah, it's a phased approach. The prior, the initial priority is moving those from Crescent Halls.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
And I know I can't say which site yet until it's awarded next week, but the process, we're definitely moving in our direction.
Really moving forward to RFP, RFQ, all that's been done. They are having meetings with the developers, so, you know, we've come further than what most people think that we have done, but the work has really been put in by so many different people and I want to thank them for even putting that work in far, as far as we have come. But yeah, y'all come out to the meetings on Tuesday, twelve o'clock, South First Street, you'll understand more.
Okay. Well, I think, take a break until eight o'clock and then resume with our consent agenda?
All right.
Thank you.
Nine thirty. Oh, nine? Nine. All right, thank you. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. It's lengthy. Ms. Rice, do you mind reading through the alphabet of consent?
Item A, minutes for July eighteenth through September tenth. Item B, appropriation Charlottesville Albemarle Adult Drug Treatment Court Grant Award, two hundred and five thousand dollars, second of two readings. Item C, an appropriation Office of Emergency Medical Services Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and fifty-five cents, second of two readings. Item D, an appropriation Supplemental Local Emergency Management Performance Grant, Fire Department, thirteen thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents, second of two readings. Item E, an appropriation Check and Connect Student Engagement Continuation Grant, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, second of two readings. Item F, an appropriation Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act Grant, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and four dollars, second of two readings. Item G, an appropriation of VML Insurance Programs Grant, two thousand dollars, first of two readings. Item H, an appropriation two thousand and seventeen Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, twenty-five thousand, thirty-three dollars, first of two readings. Item I, an appropriation Victim Witness Assistance Program Grant, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, twenty-four dollars, first of two readings. Item J, an appropriation FY nineteen Transit Grant Fund, seven hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents, first of two readings. Item K, an appropriation Virginia Housing Solutions Program Grant Award, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, first of two readings. Item L, a resolution memorandum of understanding for joint transportation planning, first of one reading. Item M, a resolution revising council procedures, first of one reading. Item N, an ordinance easement to Dominion Power at McIntyre Park, Gate Park, second of two readings. Item O, an ordinance release of portion of sewer easement at Belmont Station subdivision, second of two readings. Item P, an ordinance release of sewer easement at Beta Apartments on Seventeenth Street, second of two readings. Item Q, an ordinance quitclaim gas easement in Cascadia subdivision Albemarle County to VDOT, second of two readings. And item R, an ordinance quitclaim gas easement in Estes Park subdivision Albemarle County to VDOT, second of two readings.
I just wanted to make a, just a quick comment. There's a lot in here and a lot of note. I just wanted to call attention. A lot of this good stuff that's in the consent agenda gets missed sometimes, and especially for the press or the people watching. The drug court is the result of several years of hard work. This is a best practice, a kind of cutting-edge idea to try to divert people out of treatment, to be very innovative and compassionate and equity-focused in addressing flaws of the modern-day criminal justice system and ideas of fault and ideas of blame and understanding that a lot of people who have drug or addiction problems deserve a different modality of treatment and that then they can be diverted out of very conventional, ancient ideas of criminal justice. So it was a, several hundred thousand dollars here. It required change at the state level, so the Virginia Supreme Court had to pass a whole, had to pass a new regime that allows these. It's called a docket. It was done very sensitively and intelligently. There were a lot of other people other than us who worked on it, but we did contribute some funds in the last budget cycle. And so I hope that people do focus on it. I hope the press elevates it some and really lets people know this is a model of policymaking and the folks who worked on it so hard over the last couple of years.
And Vice Mayor Hill, may I say something? And this is also to point out that we've received some substantial grants. And one of them in particular is the Virginia Housing Solutions Program Grant Award of four hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. And I want to thank Kakidemic, Director of Human Services, for working closely with the Thomas Jefferson Area Coalition for the Homeless. And they worked and secured this grant from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. It is to work towards housing solutions that is on everyone's mind. And a lot of what we are able to do with our local government is secure grants that actually further our efforts. So I just wanted to point that out as one example. Then we had another one with Charlottesville Area Transit got seven hundred and, over seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars' worth of matching grants also. So there's a lot of work going on to secure the money, to extend the dollars that we are already investing.
All right. Is there a motion to accept the consent?
So moved.
Second.
Should we vote? I'm in another seat, but it's me. All right. Next on our agenda is a public hearing for program performance and priorities for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Funds for Program Year 2019 and '20. Tiara Howard, Grants Coordinator, will be presenting. And then we'll open up to anyone who wants to comment from the public.
Hello, my name is Tiara, and I am the Grants Coordinator in NDS. And the purpose of this public hearing is to, one, serve as a forum for public comment on the fiscal year 2017 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPER, and for Community Development Block Grant or CDBG in home programs. And then the second thing we're going to be doing today is aiding council, or council will be setting priorities for CDBG in home funds for fiscal year 1920. Goals and priorities determined as a result of this public hearing will be the framework for funding recommendations made by the CDBG in Home Task Force for funding available after July 2019. We are uncertain on how much funding, if any, the city will receive next year. However, we will estimate based on prior year funding. Given this, the city can expect to receive about four hundred and eight thousand dollars in CDBG and about seventy-eight thousand in home for the city and six hundred and twenty-four thousand for the home consortium. So, program performance highlights from fiscal year 1718. Last year, there were a hundred and forty-seven beneficiaries as a result of CDBG projects. Projects included technical assistance for microenterprises, reentry services, childcare scholarships, enhanced access to quality childcare, workforce development programs, and infrastructure improvements. I will note that infrastructure improvements occurred in the Tenth and Page neighborhood. In the way that we calculate the beneficiaries, it's by low to moderate income area, so it's a total area. So thirty-seven hundred people benefited from that activity. Of the one hundred and forty-seven beneficiaries, eighty-four percent were extremely low income, eleven percent were low income, and five percent were moderate income, and seventy-eight percent were minorities. Overall, CDBG accomplishments for the past four years have far exceeded the strategic plan goals from the 2013-2017 Consolidated Plan. For home in fiscal year, the city completed one project, one down payment assistance project, and currently have two affordable rental unit projects underway. The city did not meet its program year 17 home goals for down payment assistance activities. And some of the sub, some of the challenges that the sub recipients reported included sale price limitations, borrowing capacity of clients, issues with clients being outbid in the market, and new construction project delays. So basically, what happens with those outcomes, they get reported the following year, next year. The home consortium completed a total of fourteen projects, including first-time homebuyer assistance and homeowner rehab. And of the fourteen beneficiaries, seven percent were extremely low income, thirty-six percent were low income, and forty-three percent were minorities. All comments provided during the public hearing will be captured and reported in the city's CAPER submission, and the full document is located on the city's website. And there is also a link in the council agenda materials. Next, we will discuss CDBG in home priorities for fiscal year 1920. Given this, council will be asked to determine what the priorities will be for fiscal year 1920. Council will also be asked to confirm the priority neighborhood, determine if funds should be set aside for economic development and housing, determine the percentage for public service projects and admin and planning, and then add any additional guidelines. So overall, staff recommends that council move forward with the following priorities: affordable housing, prioritizing persons toward zero to fifty percent AMI, support for the homeless and those at risk of homelessness, workforce development, support for programs that aid in self-sufficiency, including but not limited to quality childcare, microenterprise assistance, and mental health and substance abuse services. And these priorities are consistent with the new 2018-2022 Consolidated Plan. Staff recommends approving the fifteen percent maximum allocation allowed for public service projects and approving the twenty percent maximum allocation allowed for admin and planning. Public service, that public service funds remain citywide, but that nonprofit partners are made aware of the priority neighborhood and are encouraged to recruit beneficiaries from that area. Twenty thousand to be set aside for economic development activities, forty-five thousand, five hundred to be set aside for housing activities. The remaining estimated CDBG budget, two hundred thousand, goes towards the priority neighborhood, which council agreed in the last May meeting that Ridge Street would be the next priority neighborhood for fiscal year 1920. And then any public service, housing, or economic development activities meet the goals and recommendations of the Growing Opportunities Report in addition to the Consolidated Plan. As far as community engagement, the CDBG task force will meet over the winter to review housing and public service projects and make recommendations for funding to council. The city's strategic action team will review economic development applications. And then a Ridge Street Party Neighborhood Task Force will be formed to make recommendations that will be used to, that will be used for priority neighborhood funding. A public notice went into the paper. We had a public comment period for the CAPER, and it was open from August thirty-first through September fourteenth. Approval of this agenda item aligns directly with economic sustainability, quality housing opportunities for all. And home funds will require, as far as a budgetary impact, will require twenty-five percent local match. And in previous years, this match came from the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund. There will be no impact to the general fund. So overall, those are the recommendations. And on the last page, I basically outlined them, not the last page, but the resolution. I outlined the recommendations and I underlined them so that you can change them if you need to.
So any clarifying questions before we open up the public hearing?
Yes, I do. So thank you very much for the nice presentation. Could you just go over what are the membership criteria for a CDBG task force? Just overhand. Like, I know it's predominantly has to be the residents of the neighborhood that's the priority neighborhood?
That's the priority neighborhood. So, made up of residents of the--
Like, is there a percentage?
Priority neighborhood. There's no percentage. It's actually in the code. The code outlines the criteria for both task force. But for the priority neighborhood, I'm thinking off the top of my head. You could be a resident, a business owner--
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So they're differing--
Within the neighborhood.
Okay.
That's different than the task force.
So the task force is a different membership than the priority neighborhood task force?
Correct, correct.
So how do they relate to each other?
So the task force reviews the public service and economic development activities, actually, the public service activities and the housing activities. And they make recommendations to planning commission, who then makes recommendations to council based upon the priorities that you will be setting today. And then the priority neighborhood makes funding recommendations for use of the priority neighborhood funds for issues in their neighborhood. So they live in the neighborhood and they know what the issues are, and they serve on this task force to identify and prioritize the CDBG funds and how they'll be spent in the neighborhood.
A little bit like participatory budgeting.
You could say so.
Okay. Thank you.
And there was discussion around with the participatory budgeting process, would we want to just kind of add on to that?
It would be good to coordinate those.
Do it at the same time. Yeah, that's, I know that's been raised by Matthew. I had a question. So around this, the one where the twenty-nine was the goal versus the actual, so all the funds were consumed, but they were just for a fewer--
So that's--
Further units?
So are you talking about the home funds?
Yes.
So twenty-nine was the goal--
Right, the goal.
For fiscal year seventeen, and then fourteen projects were completed. So--
Right.
The projects that didn't meet that goal just will be recycled during the year. So basically, next year, they're still working on the project, so next year, the outcomes will be reported.
They will come to fruition. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we open up the public hearing? All right, we'll open that up. Do we have any signed up? Ms. Rice, do we have a list for the-- Okay. Would anyone like to speak on this?
I hadn't really planned on talking about this, but Nancy Carpenter, I live in the Rose Hill Neighborhood Association, which I hope will be the 2021 neighborhood, based on the comprehensive plan and the amount of commercial development that's being called for on Rose Hill, and perhaps the change, who knows, in some zoning classifications on residential areas. It'd probably be nice to be considered. It's still, I guess, one of the, I like that neighborhood and would like to see some of that. But that being said, if I'm a CDBG issues and perhaps initiatives or programs that might come forward, I know that you talked about the consolidated plan that's there. I would really like to see, hopefully, some concern come forward that will help to promote funding for permanent supportive housing units here in the city. One of the biggest things we need for folks who are trying to get out of the day-to-day challenges of being homeless, but who also have issues of, mental health issues and substance abuse issues, is housing that also comes with support services. And that is one of the biggest things that we are lacking, I think, in this community when it comes to the area of affordable housing, is having landlord engagement who would buy into a program like that to understand the benefits of renting to folks like that. Hopefully, finding, you know, like your two-year housing voucher that you so boldly, you know, funded, that this could also be a program that could then reach folks who desperately need housing or more stable housing, but they also need some support services that help them to mitigate some of those issues that create instability in their housing. And that's all I wanted to say on that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hi again. Evan, city resident. I'd like to echo Nancy's comments, and I also wanted to add another comment in regards to the microenterprise assistance part of this grant, as well as one of the priorities, number three, determine if CDBG funds should be set aside for economic development. So it looks like this grant, at least some part of this grant, is setting aside funds to help qualified entrepreneurs to start a business. I'm wondering if this, in the review process for awarding money, if there could be given some sort of priority or extra weight given to people who want to start up worker cooperatives in the city, just given that you would, say, for example, you have a landscaping company that someone wants to start, and it has a traditional business model versus another landscaping company that comes to this, for this grant as a worker cooperative business model. I feel like that could actually make a bigger difference if you have, say, like, you know, five workers and the owner, in which the owner's making a lot more money compared to the workers who may be making minimum wage versus a worker coop situation in which any profits from this business and hence this grant would be more evenly distributed amongst people who are starting this business. So just a thought, if that could be considered extra weight in the review process or something that could be advertised, as you all may be looking for more co-ops in the city, I think that'd be kind of cool. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
If I--
Close the hearing.
To the point about the worker, the cooperative arrangements, I do, I do remember that Rich Schuyler with Charlottesville Works had been working with someone in the community to do a flash freeze manufacturing firm that was going to be cooperatively based. I don't know where that is right now, and I think they were looking at a site that was near the Carlton Road area. There's like a manufacturing zoned area, industrial zone area. But about four years ago, there was a really big thrust to get that off-- zoned area, industrial zone area. But um about four years ago, there was a really big thrust to get that off the ground. Um and then we seemed to have gotten really crushed with the affordable housing crisis. And I I do believe we need to do both. It it can't be all or all one thing or an other. So I will i- if I don't know if and Mr. Murphy, if somebody could follow up with Mr. Skyler and see where are they on that? Because I know there's nothing precluding or preventing anybody from doing this. I like the idea of encouraging it with some sort of a weighted uh measurement. Uh but I do also want to know where we are on that because I know Holly Lee worked on it, Chris Engel worked on it. Um we were looking at Evergreen Enterprises based in Cleveland as a model, and it's a it's a very, very good model.
Uh we'll provide an update. Um I'm confident Mr. Engel will have that. I'm not aware of any active work on that at this time. I think that that project opportunity has passed.
Okay.
I I do know that um there have been a lot of folks who've worked on co-op ideas. You'll remember probably at the launch of the CIC.
Yes.
You know, that uh Tuan Nguyen, uh Joni Freeman, lots of folks were talking about co-ops. And I and there a couple did start uh during that timeframe. Um and we we talked even at that time about how to funnel uh businesses from uh or or funnel city business to small businesses too. And that's been effective in food service, but not in larger expenditures.
Well, thank you. If you can just follow that up on that. And I know Rich Skyler would be a good contact as well. Yeah, I I remember that because we we all made a field trip up to DC Central Kitchen as that as another model. But um and then we got bogged down with the discussion about having a a community commercial kitchen, and then we wound wound up realizing how many there were in town, and we didn't need another one. Thank you.
I know from prior decisions to speak to the earlier comment, we had designated that um the Ridge Street one was this, but it's in cycle with Belmont. For how how long is that again?
Six years. So it will alternate for six years so that each priority neighborhood will get three years of funding.
And that's something we've done prior multi multi-year with Tenth and Page was the last, right? So at this point, you need us to approve resolution for the council priorities in one, and then the second piece is
It's just that, just one piece.
So it's just that, okay. The other part was just a report. Okay. All right. So are there any other questions, discussion? Dr. Bellamy?
I move that we adopt, approve the resolution on council priorities for CDBG and home funds, FY nineteen twenty.
Second.
All in favor? Vote here?
Aye.
Again, that's that's not me, but
That works, too.
Oh, is that only, do we?
This is the first of one reading.
Oh, we had to do it.
Only one reading.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, next on our agenda is the first reading of two, um in consideration of an ordinance for providing an easement to Albemarle County for Penn Park Stream Restoration, and Lauren Hildebrand, the Director of Utilities, is here to present.
Thank you. Uh Vice Mayor and councilors, the city and Almar County have a history of collaboration on environmental topics as supported by the two thousand sixteen Memorandum of Understanding for Collaboration between the City of Charlottesville and the County of Albemarle regarding the environment. In the summary table of collaborative uh of collaboration on programs and initiatives associated with the Memorandum of Agreement Understanding Collaboration on Water Quality Compliance Through Joint Pursuit of Cost-Effective Capital Projects that generate pollution reduction credits needed by each locale locality to meet compliance requirements is called out as an opportunity. The city and county have recently identified a five hundred and sixty linear foot section of degraded urban stream which could benefit from restoration. Restoration of this stream will provide pollution reduction credits needed by both localities to meet compliance requirements. Portions of that uh streams lie within the city's Penn Park and the county's River Run subdivision. The county has agreed to manage the design and construction of this project and incur all maintenance-related costs for the project for ten years following the completion of the project's construction. The county has secured funding for design and construction of the stream restoration, and the city is contributing funding for a portion of the project through its Stormwater Capital Improvement Plan. The city, as the owner of Penn Park, has been requested to approve an easement to the county uh to allow the county and its contractors to enter Penn Park for the purpose of construction of the stream restoration project and the maintenance pro- maintenance on the project for ten years. After the ten years, the easement will terminate, and the city will take over maintenance responsibility of the city-owned portion of the project. The ste- steam stream restoration project will achieve nutrient credit reductions required by the municipal separate storm sewer systems MS four permits and the associated total maximum daily load action plan for both localities. The stream restoration project will provide approximately two hundred and forty-seven pounds of nitrogen nutrient credit reductions which are needed by the city for compliance with its TMDL action plan. The stream restoration project will also improve water quality and the aesthetic of the River Run Stream Channel. The total project cost for stream restoration is is estimated to be almost five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, with the city's portion being a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, equating to a cost of approximately five hundred and six dollars per pound of nitrogen removal. And typically, if you look at average cost for stream restoration projects around the country, the average cost for nitrogen removal is of almost nineteen hundred and fifty dollars per pound. So this is a pretty good deal for the city if we're looking for nitrogen credits, which is exactly what we're looking for. The county is receiving grant funding to make the project viable. This project aligns with the city council's vision of Charlottesville as a leader in environmental sustainability and the green city vision. The project also aligns with Goal three point four, which is be responsible stewards of natural resources. The funding for this project has been allocated from the uh fiscal year nineteen Stormwater CIP Fund. Charlottesville Utility Staff and the city attorney have reviewed the proposed easement and plat and have no concerns. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the Penn Park Stream Restoration Project easement to Albemarle County with a with a requested waive second reading. The waived second reading is requested so Albemarle County can meet a deadline. The county cannot award the project without having all the easements, so waiving the second reading would help meet their deadline. I'm available if you have any questions.
I just want to e- echo you and I had a moment there to think about about the MOU from two thousand sixteen, because this was ju- just to go back to ancient history, it took a lot of time and a lot of work to get those four Memorandums of Understanding done. Council Galvin and I had a meeting with an expert in regionalism from Portland. Uh I think I think Wes, you came in and out of that also, and we we kind of learned that one of the ways you get toward better regional cooperation between different entities is that you start small and you start with real things you can work on. I really appreciate the narrative here because it shows that but for that kind of directive from council from council and the board as a policy matter, this could be perceived as a zero sum. So the two parties would 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 both be pursuing their interests as opposed to trying to find what the policy bodies directed them to, which is areas of cooperation. And this is really good policy, and it sounds like a ton of work. I'm sure that it's very unsung went into making this work on all these different fronts. And I just, in a time when so much of the policy is really political, this I I just really appreciate this as a as a good policymaking.
Great. Thank you for comments.
Of course.
I guess we could make comments. We don't need to wait. Typically, we make the motion to approve and then we make comments, but
Because originally I wasn't there, but I was forgetting they're waving. So we have to waive the second reading first.
Let's also um yeah, public hearing.
Yeah.
We do need to.
Oh, no, we don't have a public hearing here.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, there's an ordinance, right?
Right. So to to keep it clean, I'll uh move to adopt the ordinance approving a deed of easement from the City of Charlottesville, Virginia to the County of Albemarle across Penn Park for a joint stream restoration project.
My question was, do we have to have the motion to waive the second reading first?
Well, yes, first you need to to waive the second reading. You would need a motion to waive the second reading. And if all four of you agree, then you go to the motion, the motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay.
Motion to move the second reading or to waive the second reading.
Second.
So I I agree.
So we vote?
Yeah, all in favor, yeah.
So now the motion on the floor is alive.
Right.
So so I got a second?
Mm-hmm.
So all I'm going to do is make a quick comment that um uh it that that is is a severely degraded segment of stream. Um we do need to make sure that we attend to all our total maximum daily load requirements, and it's really good to see that we are using the stormwater utility fee as it was intended. And it is uh really gratifying to see our our two staffs, county and city, working so well together. So I really appreciate all your work, Ms. Hildebrand, and um and I appreciate the county the county's willingness to participate and take care of the project for the first ten years. Is that what it is?
Yes, that's correct.
So I think um yeah, this is a win-win. I appreciate it. And uh let's vote.
Let's vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the first reading in consideration of an ordinance for creating a permit, a permit parking zone in Belmont. Brennan Duncan, the city traffic engineer, will be presenting. Good evening, Mr. Duncan.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilors. Um so this is, I guess, the first step in two. Um we e- every year, you you may or may not know, we get applications for residential permit parking. Um this last year, we got one for Belmont and un- unknowing to myself and didn't realize it until we had got to that point, we don't actually have a a parking zone for Belmont. Um so before we can bring that before you for approval, we have to create a zone. So um what you have before you is um an amendment to the ordinance, uh section fifteen two oh four, which would designate an area, and I believe you have a m- a map in there as well, but um essentially it is east of Sixth Street, south of the railroad, west of Carlton, and north of Monticello to create a Belmont neighborhood uh permit parking area. Um we the the application we had was for the six six hundred block of Hinton, which would be you know, just west of Avon, between Avon and Sixth Street. I know there there were some questions before this meeting about uh restaurant parking and that. So the this first application really won't deal with that because it's it's more downtown commuter parking related. Um but if you would like, we can we can talk about that because this will kind of set that for future applications as well. So um you know, right now, the the timeframe for the the permit parking that's laid out in in code, everything except for university right now is five AM till six PM. University has a slightly different one. Theirs is Sunday, twelve oh one AM to seven AM, and then Monday through Saturday, twelve oh one AM to seven PM. So um it does stipulate in the code that if council wants a different timeframe or different days of the week than than the standard, they can can do that. But um a- as for right now, I don't see why that would be needed specifically for Hinton, um the six hundred block of Hinton. But um if we want to look at that either with this one or with with future applications, we can do that. So um if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
When people apply, like putting these requests, they do they identify the time ranges that they feel are the most critical?
They do not. Um they they could, I guess, uh but in our current petition, there's no line for, you know, we would like these hours included in it.
But then when you go to actually do the test, like the that you call it a test, I guess, or you go on, you you
Right, the parking survey.
What what's going on during certain periods of time?
Mm-hmm.
Do you get the feedback that this is like a ti- period of time where it's because I agree that the six hundred block of Hinton's going to have a very different request than maybe the eight hundred block of Belmont?
Correct. Um we can, I guess, we can uh create separate zones if if that's the will of council. Right now, I just have it all as one. So so the the timeframes are really by zone dependent. So if you feel like, you know, the the one isn't going to apply to the other and they really need to be separate, we can we can do that.
So this zone is kind of locking us in on a certain timeframe for that entire zone, once, you know, Hinton comes through?
The way that the code is written for the other zones, yes, because it's uh it's by zone as far as the hours go. So
So we might have an opportunity to break up this zone in the future.
We could break it up in the future, or we could modify it now and and say that, you know, we'll establish them separately.
I'm a little bit confused because it's almost like we need to know your survey results to know how to break it up.
So our survey results are only by the block that applies.
The six hundred block.
So the six hundred block did did meet the requirements for residential permit parking, which is uh seventy-five percent occupancy and fifty percent of those being non-residents.
And to be clear, so this just I I had to, so this allows somebody to do an application for a street within a zone.
Correct.
Okay.
But there's still all kinds of checks within that street, and you have to you have a
Yes, this 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 isn't establishing any particular street. This is only allowing us to create a street in the future.
Or timeframes. So if another
It would still it would still have to be go through the the process to establish that as residential permit parking. So even if we establish a timeframe, until that actually goes that road goes through, that block goes through, that timeframe doesn't apply.
So
I'm I'm just getting at is it seems like most of the problem in this part of Belmont is evening.
Except for this
Except for this block.
Block has asked for it during daytime because they're getting
So how do we reconcile the others that are going to come in who want the evening?
So so the, I mean, if we adopted the same, I guess, timeframe that's used at the university, that's, you know, basically all day. So it would
And that was what was that again? What was the?
So that was Sunday from twelve, basically midnight to seven AM. And then during the week, Monday through Saturday, it's midnight until seven PM.
Mr. I'm going to kind of ask, kind of some background questions. So just this may be before your time too. So that this this system that we have where a zone gets set up and then you do applications within the zone, do you know why that was set up that way? Is it to create a, is it like a check so that council has? Because the the alternative would just be any street in the city got to apply without there having to be some zone that council had voted on.
Yeah, I I really that was before my time. I really don't know the background as to why why it was set up that way. I know I know that there were
It's odd.
More zones originally that probably came to council than we have now, because the way that our zones are numbered right now, we have like zone one, and then it skips to like zone four, five, six.
Because it means that anybody who wants to do this, they have to go through to, it's an extra hurdle, basically, to a- as in this case. I mean, you have to get council to create a zone, and then you, if you're not in one.
O- other than Belmont, all of the, because this is really, I I think the intention of this from the beginning was really a commuter type of mitigation. Um it it wasn't meant to be um, you know, a commercial uh, you know, business, you know, restaurant as we have in Belmont. Um so the, I mean, it was intended to keep, you know, from downtown and hospital employees and that kind of stuff from parking in the in the residential neighborhoods.
With the West Main streetscape, there was a lot of concern in Star Hill, specifically with parking with some of the residents there, because that was and what was happening on the streets. And it was like, well, you just try and get permit parking on your street. That's one of the ways to like north downtown this. That's one of the mechanisms. But I think that this is how I, are they in?
Star Hill would not be. There there's one, there's one that's, there's one that's close.
Tent and Page is.
Yeah, Tent and Page is part of the university. Star Hill, there is one that's close to it that we could expand
Yeah.
to include all of that.
Okay, just trying to understand. Because I think there'll be more of these.
And really, the creation of those zones isn't an impetus of those, you know, people who want to get the permit. It's really on us as the city to create those zones. I mean, they're not coming to us saying we would like a new zone over here, and that's a six-month process before we can get, you know, a street adopted.
I guess for me, though, just looking at this this currently shaded area, I do think there's two different requirements. I think that the side that's um on um what is it, the west side of Avon slash Ninth Street is much more of a daytime option, which is the six hundred block of Hinton is asking about, whereas everything on the on the east side to me isn't is a downtown Belmont evening concern because of the restaurant frequency.
My, my only argument with you there would be, especially when we go into construction of the Belmont Bridge, I think that the, the immediate residences east of Avon are gonna feel that pressure as well. And, and when we get to that point, I may be coming to you with some temporary, uh, trial-type things for, for the duration of the Belmont Bridge construction to kind of alleviate some of those concerns, um, 'cause I, I don't want them, the, the way that our code is set up, we can't really address a problem until there is a problem. And I, I don't want the, and, and we're on a yearly schedule with that, and I don't want construction to be going on for a year before we can address it, so, um...
What do you think is the cleanest way to address this tonight? So you're saying five AM to six PM is one of the options, midnight to sevens, but we have to say that for this entire zone, we're gonna be adopting those timelines?
Well, I, I think the cleanest, I, I did reach out to the Belmont Carlton Neighborhood Association to, to see what their input was, and I haven't heard back from them yet as far as the timeframes go. I, I think going with the general one is safe for now, because we only, it is only affecting that one.
And define that general one again, what is the general one?
Six AM to five PM.
Okay. Is that every day of the week?
Monday, Friday?
I think it's just Monday through Friday.
It's probably similar to everything else around downtown.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we're not, we're leaving it flexible as other requests come through, we can just easily...
Yeah, I mean, if, if other requests come in for, you know, around the restaurant districts, you know, we can revisit it at that point, we can, you know, amend the code again. Um, it's, it's really even a different section of code than what I'm bringing before you now, what I'm bringing before you now is really just establishing what that zone is.
Okay.
The hours are in a different section, which we didn't address at this point.
Okay, so there is no perclusion here?
Right.
We're leaving it open.
And I have another question, but it's a, it's a point of process, not, and, and it's related to a lot of the questions I asked earlier today, which, which did get to a bigger concern about how to solve the problem of parking generated by all the commercial re, uh, restaurant uses that have been put in place in Belmont Center. And I, I have to quote Mr. Rick Seibert here, "The entertainment area seems to have been simply sprung up in the midst of a single-family neighborhood in a fairly unplanned way." So we have what we have right now, so my question is, can I have a second motion, uh, that's different but related, where it would call for and direct Mr. Murphy and his staff to pursue, um, a, a more comprehensive approach to parking? Or is that a, I'm using that, this is an opportunity right now, but I wanted to know if I could have a, a second separate motion after we pass this one?
Um, I think, based on your rules of procedure, that would be a new business item, but it's not within the...
Okay, that's why I've asked the question.
Yeah, but you could certainly ask that to be placed on the next agenda.
Well, I'll bring that up under other business then.
Any other questions?
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt an ordinance to amend and reordain section fifteen dash two oh four of the Code of the City of Shawesville nineteen ninety, amended to establish a new permit parking zone in the Belmont neighborhood.
Second.
And that's a first reading.
Anything else? Oh, we, no, we're not voting tonight.
Yeah.
I guess we didn't have to do that, that's what we learned.
We don't have to, but that's fine.
Oh, yeah.
We're all, we're in right. Well, we know how we stand. Alright, well, that brings us to, thank you, um, to other business. So... I introduced, um, last evening, a budget request, um, by the civilian review board to send members to the, um, annual conference, for the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, it's their annual meeting. And so we do have this document, it just kind of lays out what they're looking at for this conference, but I know that we've had some discussions, um, one off, I know I did with Mr. Murphy and mentioned at least one of our counselor, if we would consider just maybe a, a flat amount that we can allocate for the CRB, knowing that there is other travel, I know that they're interested in also looking at other jurisdictions within the Commonwealth, so maybe some overnight hotel stays. And so I think consistent with what's happened for other boards with such charges, um, Mr. Murphy and I talked about maybe ten thousand dollars as like a lump sum that we would allocate, which would, obviously, a lot of it would come for this specific initiative, which I think is important, I think it's very timely, and the scope of it is exactly what we were kind of charging with them to do, and it just so happens to be coming up in the next few weeks, and so as they have interested members wanting to go, um, and then beyond that, we know that they're, they're gonna wanna go and look at some of these other municipalities within the Commonwealth. So, I just thought, just to kind of have it, that we're not in a situation where we're having to discuss this every time they have, they have a need, and I know that at one point we asked for, you know, a full budget, and certainly that would be ideal to have that, but I think at this point, since they're asking for this now, rather than having to come back again, I thought it was a reasonable amount.
I, I support, I support the idea generally, the, the one thing would be, just ma- I think the reason we usually would, would get a budget from anybody who received funds is just good practice where you just wanna make sure that it's a one-time request, you know, that, that you're not, that it, that all of the planning that would go toward the funds has been baked into the budget, that, that's how you, so I, I just, I wouldn't wanna, I don't wanna make it bureaucratic, but that's, that's usually what you do, just so that, you know, if some amazing idea comes up in, in two months, but that costs twelve thousand dollars, and we, we just, you know, it's, it, it kind of puts the decision-making for that amount of money, and then if there's some, so they're not coming back again, that would, and I don't, but that said, I, I wouldn't wanna create a huge deal about it. But would it be a hassle to, to, to give us a budget, which would say maybe there's another seven thousand dollars that, maybe that's unallocated, but would just say, we, we know that we're not getting another request? I mean, that's usually why you do a budget.
I think it was the intention was to have that, but it was, they weren't quite to that extent of having that available tonight, and I just know that this is a timely request, so even if we decided to give them less just to support and give some flexibility with this request, which is...
Ha- having said what I said, I think they're doing ten thousand, we're fine, I mean, we, we, we get, just as long as...
But I think to have an ask, or just kind of have, you know, a budget that would kind of reflect the type, you know, the types of things that they're projecting to spend on, and I guess when prior, I guess the Blue Ribbon Commission didn't even use the funds, all of it...
Last, I think expenditures would be approved by the city manager, so that there is some level of...
Some, yeah, as long as we said that, then I think...
Okay, so we'll have...
I would support that.
A check and balance when expenditures are incurred. So in this case, when this final, some of the final numbers are in, just, I mean, we, I think we kind of have this here, but if you make any major changes to this, if an additional person goes, or if one person, instead of sending two days, goes four, it might adjust that, so it'd just be helpful to know going in. And then as you come across these other opportunities to go out of this community and wanna, wanna do those things, and you know what those estimates are, just, I guess, let us know through the city manager's office that those are coming, and we're all gonna, and we'll all stay within this ten thousand dollar budget, which is in addition to the twenty-five hundred that you have for your certain regular meetings that are going on locally.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah. And I, I...
This is like a travel...
I assume this is coming out of the city council's discretionary fund?
Mm-hmm. Dr. Bellamy?
It's fine with me, um, I would also prefer, uh, like a budget, but I think for this request, it's gonna be a minimal amount, so, if we could approve it. Um, I think there's one other issue, though, they're not aware of how many people are gonna be looking to attend the conference, so the price may go up some more.
I thought, here it says two.
Yeah, but I think that was because not all of the members quite understood the dates or whatnot, am I, I mean, three of the members here, is that correct?
Why couldn't we, why couldn't we just approve this contingent on there being a, a budget provided that's included? And if there's placeholder figures in the budget, that's fine, and they could say that this will change, but just means that we approve it, but in that package, the city manager must receive a budget that puts this into...
So, yeah, I'm fine with that, I just, I know they have to go next week.
But that, we, we can do that tonight, it just means that the check could be cut tomorrow, as long as there's, in a budget, shouldn't, I mean, it could have placeholder figures in it, it just says that...
But wouldn't their budget have to be reviewed by their committee and whatnot?
Yeah.
Well...
So would their...
But that's, that's best practice, I mean, it really should be reviewed by the, by the governing board, I mean, you, if it has not, if that has not happened, that would make...
They have all reviewed this portion, and I was just trying to get a step further, just to provide some more flexibility, if they did, had an additional person were to go on this trip, or if, just knowing that other things were gonna come.
How about this, well, could we approve this trip, since they're sure now that there's only two going, and then we can also request an additional budget, yeah?
For the supplement.
And then invent that they need supplemental funds, is that okay?
That sounds fine, we get it, we get a, we are, we have a budget for this particular conference, so we can approve that amount tonight, and that we are going to disperse more funds later on, uh, to supplement your needs, once we do get another budget with more information.
Yeah, that makes sense, the only thing I want to just make sure is clear is, and you said that there is some flexibility with some of these budgets, like, you know, these are estimates they have, and they've done a lot of work to kind of get the hotels and, and understand what the flights are gonna be, but I wanna make sure we have enough flexibility that...
Could we round it up to five thousand?
Let me just clarify a few things, uh, when council decided to create the CRB, you already started with a budget of twenty-five hundred dollars, so that's already in the account, and they just go through staff in order to expend the dollars, right? The, um, request about the, um, conference did come up recently, um, but you'll remember that on August twentieth, uh, Mr. Gatherers had already talked with us about the idea of, uh, expanding the budget beyond the twenty-five hundred dollars in order to be able to do the work that the CRB wants to do. And it's just that, um, this, this came kind of, uh, along with that. I, I think it would be great to have a budget to meet council's, uh, request overall, and certainly, um, to deal with it in our typical process, then we would have the budget and, uh, agenda memo, uh, to consider that. But, all that being said, I think that if you're willing to transfer the funds from the priority initiative to the CRB, and you're gonna have an approval process, um, whatever that may be, that can govern whether the funds are released, and if there are travel arrangements that need to be made, you just need to make a decision, is staff supposed to make those for the folks, uh, and we take care of the expense, or are you willing to deal with things on a reimbursement basis, that's really an internal controls kind of question. I, I don't know that you need to do two separate, um, considerations of expanding their budget, uh, but certainly wanna do what you want. The only other fine-tuning that I'd like to consider is, the city manager's office has had no involvement other than to answer a couple of questions to date. It has either been Ms. Rice or her staff, since this is a board or commission of the council. What I just heard is that now the city manager's office should be involved in approving expenses, and I'd like to have that clarified on the dais, if that's a new expectation.
I think we have all agreed in the past that we wanna have separate lanes between the city manager and the CRB. So, um, the question would be then, would, would this council approve the budget? Like, approve the expenditures? Until such time as we have a, a clerk of council, chief of staff, to work on our behalf.
Who disperses the funds in a thing like this typically? If it's gonna come, it's council, you know, we've done this a bunch of times, in this case, who would do that?
I would say that, uh, you know, in, in this case, right, uh, Ms. Brazelton would make all of the arrangements, uh, you know, fly, you know, flights, uh, hotels, and then, uh, we would probably either, um, if it was a city staff person, they'd take a city credit card for expenses like, uh, taxis and meals and all that. We wouldn't usually do that with boards and commissions, and so we'd probably deal with that on a reimbursement basis, unless somebody didn't have the capacity to put that money out there, and then we would, uh, look for a way to solve that problem, but as much as possible, we would make all the payments through the city ahead of time.
The only reason I'm asking is that it, it doesn't, with respect to Dr. Bellamy's concern about whether the board could get together and, and pass a budget, whether, whatever that would take, or, you know, or whatever they got to us. Maybe it could be that they're delegated, they could electronically delegate a couple of members to send us a budget, however they, they work. It just seems like we could include a requirement here, especially given there's already been a twenty... I'm just thinking, in terms of precedent, what we do for so, for hundreds of nonprofit applicants for funds, and we have all these other advisory boards that could also start to want to go to extremely important, urgent conferences, and we, we just handle this through a budget, so we could say, contingent upon a budget that meets city requirements or something like that, funds will be dispersed, that should not be that, that, I would hope that wouldn't be that big of a deal. And it could be for ten thousand dollars, a budget for ten thousand dollars, and this would be part of it, but at least we would know that's an annual budget, there's not gonna be slipping and sliding, um...
It's just for one year anyway, for this...
Yeah, yeah, just, just, and if it's ten thousand dollars, that's the right figure, this would just be a good practice because of the, of the process we're setting up for anybody else, and it, and it still, I think, would accomplish the goal, and we just would say, "Please include a, an annual budget for this amount with the final communication." And then if you guys can hu- hustle and get that together in the next few days, then the funds will be put, you know, released.
But, but I don't wanna preclude them from being able to call Sarah tomorrow and literally, because it's like next week, so to get like flights and hotels...
But we've said that it's approved, it just means that it has to include a budget, the budget, we, we're not setting up any budget to dis, to, that's why I was asking who approves it, it would be administrative. So it'd be, it'd be Sarah Brazel, it just means that there has to be a document included with it, we're not meeting again to look at this, it is approved, it just means it has to include a budget.
But they have a budget here.
For the whole year, though, I'm saying for the whole ten thousand dollars.
I think, if I may, right now, they have a, an immediate need for this conference, and they are giving us a budget that we can approve tonight...
But I'm talking about for the ten thousand dollars.
That's another, that's a supplement, that's another step.
Mr. Blair has a comment, sorry, really quick.
Well, I just need to ask a question as a citizen, not as a member of the CRB. When the BRC was established, you, they were given an operating budget of ten thousand dollars.
Right.
So why not just expand the operating budget of the CRB? I mean, I'm sure that they can put together a, a budget that is...
And we received, I think there was a budget...
To expand the, the, the actual operating budget of the, the CRB...
That's a great idea.
Twenty-five hundred to, to, to a, of level of ten thousand.
That would solve my problem, and, but with the BRC, we had a budget, we had, you know, line items for, I think what was, that ten thousand dollars was expected to be spent on, I believe, we may not have, in which case...
But that didn't come directly from the BRC, that was something that the city manager, before it was put together.
Right.
That's right, it was allocated before.
So, I mean, if you just expand the amount that's, that's allocated, and then if you still need a budget to come through...
I would be fine with that, I, that, that, that would solve my, the concern.
Mr. Blair?
I, I just wanted to point out, as the council's considering this, and the CRB's looking to expend the funds, they, they are a public body per FOIA, they would need a minimum of three business days, I mean, to even get a meeting noticed, and I know the conference is next week, so, just, I'm not sure that it's...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That it's practically possible for the CRB to convene that quickly, given the constraints of FOIA and get something passed.
I think Mr. Gather's ideas would, would address my...
But we would need to have that on the next agenda and formally vote to expand the budget.
What, why can't we just give them seventy-five hundred dollars and state that it's an expansion of the...
But I mean, in terms of an action that's modifying a duly, uh, voted upon resolution, that, I mean, Mr. Blair, do we, is, can we tonight just...
I think tonight, what, what you can do is that, Mr. Murphy and I had a conversation earlier today, the money, there, the money in your priorities has already been appropriated. This would be more of an allocation of that priorities for tonight. Since the monies, you know, there is the requirement in the city charter of three days, a three-day lapse before you can appropriate money, but since the money has been appropriated, tonight would just simply be an allocation of that already appropriated money.
And that's the twenty-five hundred?
He means just the council strategic funds?
Tonight, tonight, you can allocate out of your strategic priority fund...
So if, if we did seventy-five hundred to get to the full ten thousand, then we said, "Please, please provide us with a budget for how you're planning on spending that whole ten thousand dollars." Some of it is already spent, some of it is not, that would, that would make me happy, um, in terms of what we're talking about, you know, it doesn't hang it up, but then it, it sets a figure.
Right.
But they can still get the money they need to go to the conference?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
So we should suggest that they have a point person contact...
Is that okay, Dr. Bellamy, is that...
Contact Ms. Brazelton to have those, I think, that we're think, the make, the biggest expenses are hotel, flights, and conference fees?
We don't typically make travel arrangements in the clerk's office, we've got over forty boards and commissions that we support, so if we start making travel arrangements for each of the boards and commissions, it would be pretty overwhelming right now. for each of the boards and commissions, it would be pretty overwhelming right now. What we do with commissions is they make their own flight and travel and hotel arrangements, and then they coordinate with our staff for reimbursement.
Okay. So let's follow that path, and if there's any concerns with that path, could someone please let a member of council know?
And if that's an issue for the members who need the travel, they just need to communicate what their plans are, and somebody from my administrative staff will take care of it.
All right, so we don't have to actually take a formal-
There's no formal vote?
No, we didn't.
For allocation.
Yeah, you still need to decide an amount that you're willing to move from the council priority initiatives fund to the cost center that you've already previously established for the CRB.
So we're saying additional $7,500.
So I move that we move $7,500 from the council discretionary fund to the CRB's, the civilian review board's already allocated budget of $2,500.
May I make a friendly addition? With the expectation that an annual budget for the expenditure of such funds shall be received within-
After the next week.
An appropriate time, I'd be willing to-
Within two months.
Okay.
Great.
I accept.
Okay.
So that you're seconding with-
Second.
All right, vote? And then Ms. Galvin, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, and I don't want to take up too much time, because I think this is wonderful. It was around 9:00, and we're about to go home. So, earlier today, I think you all saw the responses that I got from Mr. Rick Seibert, who's our director of parking. And what I was raising was a lot of the questions revolving around the stress and strain being put upon the residential area immediately around the, what we call Belmont Center. And that is precisely because of all the restaurant and retail uses that have been growing and thriving in that center. However, most of the patrons that come into Belmont Center don't live there. And so consequently, what's happening is a lot of the people that come are parking on neighborhood streets, and that prevents residents of those streets from having their own parking spaces on the street. My concern is that with tonight, since we've put permit parking, we've made a permit parking zone, which is desperately needed by this community, that that's going to just, it'll kind of remove a source of parking, however, for the patrons in the Belmont Center. And so I asked a number of questions earlier today of Mr. Seibert and Mr. Duncan that revolved around different strategies that could be put into play to accommodate the parking needs of people coming to patronize the stores. And Mr. Seibert said that, yes, valet parking is a possibility. He said, yes, shared parking arrangements is good practice, it's a possibility. There have been challenges in the past with retailers sharing their spaces. However, what I got from Mr. Seibert was a sense that there is no comprehensive plan for Belmont Center moving forward. So what I would like to do on a council agenda, before February, when we're going to start getting applications for permit parking, hopefully well before February, is that we would direct staff through Mr. Murphy to assign appropriate staff from parking and NDS and the Office of Economic Development, perhaps others, to work with the Belmont Neighborhood, businesses, and residents to develop a comprehensive parking plan and strategy in keeping with best practices that have been identified in two previous studies at the City of Charlottesville Commission, dating from 2014 and then 2015. And that this plan would be in place by the time residential parking permits are issued in February 2019. So I know we need to discuss that further, it's not something to act on tonight, unless you want to act on it tonight, but it's not typical that we vote on something without notice. And I don't, I don't like doing that. But I do think that we can no longer kick this can down the road. It's only getting worse as the businesses grow. And there is no solution in sight unless you put intention, and you start pulling down some of the good findings that we've had spent good money on in the past for two parking studies. And Mr. Seibert seemed to know that there was a way to go forward on this, including shuttles from remote parking spaces. But the, you can double your spaces in valet parking, in parking garages, as long as you have someone moving the cars around. And when you have an aerial view of that part of Belmont, you do see between Draper Aiden and Lexus Nexus and various other places, there's an awful lot of parking that's not utilized in the evening.
Yeah, agreed.
And everyone wants us to build a parking garage, and we cannot slap down $10 to $20 million just because people want to be able to park right across the street from where they want to go. So anybody, anyone, okay, so we can get that on a future agenda?
Sure.
Great, thank you. I think the Belmont community would appreciate it, and I think the-
And what expectations we have for staff coming into that meeting, like they're going to provide? How much information do we want on that first?
Well, I think what I just said, it would be good for almost a more formal presentation, perhaps, from Mr. Seibert, because he gave a really good assessment of what was possible. But it would also take some understanding of what would it, what would it mean to identify the process to make sure you get those shared parking arrangements in place, for example. I know we have shared parking arrangements in place between Carlton Views and Pace. So we have precedent for that. And we have other precedents on the 7th Street parking lot that leave it more open and flexible as opposed to identifying and assigning spaces to particular clients, like a restaurant. So it's going to take some research, but the idea is to find out precisely from the residents and the businesses first, what is the problem? What do they need as a solution? And try to get to the point where, you know, it cannot always be a parking garage. There are other solutions here. Is that, does that make any sense to you, Mr. Murphy?
I've got it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, no other business? We'll finish by opening the floor to our second matters by the public.
Now, this is what I really wanted to talk about, Nancy Carpenter, again. I talk about housing stability, but it's also woven into the area of emergency preparedness. Virginia, I think, was very lucky in some parts of our region with this last hurricane that went a little bit further south, but we can't always guarantee that. And HUD and FEMA partner with the Census Bureau biannually for a American Housing Survey, which just came out today, they just released the 2017 results. And this year, they also talked about emergency preparedness. They send this survey out to 121 million households in this country. And what they found is that 39% of renters that responded to this survey are unprepared to pay for the cost of emergency evacuation or the results of an emergency situation. And I'm curious as to what the city's policy is in regards to renters. Homeowners, they found, are a little bit more well-prepared, and I would certainly assume that they would be, because of their ability to access financial streams to be able to address what they might have lost during a situation. We may not have like the coastal flooding, or some of the, you know, necessarily river flooding, but we certainly are prone to earthquakes and tornadoes, and also, you know, very strong remnants, Hurricane Camille, most of you may not have been around, some of you were, how deadly that was. So I'd like to find out what the city does in response, or if that is part of an emergency plan for renters in this community that they, and they're talking about amounts, $2,000. They don't have $2,000 available to them to be able to mitigate the results of an emergency evacuation or an emergency situation that, you know, like I said, we do get tornadoes. The other thing I wanted to talk about is that I know that the hack will be probably formulating or has formulated a housing strategy to go along with the comprehensive plan. And I hope that one of the, and it's, you know, my fault that I haven't read up on it, but one of the areas I hope that they really look at is eviction prevention, because I'm working with a subcommittee on program services for the campaign to reduce evictions here in Virginia, since Evict Lab came out with some really horrendous numbers in some of our tidewater areas with eviction rates. That area also is looked at as part of a housing strategy. Because if you don't have, for your renters, a strong eviction prevention program, then, you know, you're going to, you know, people are going to be housing challenged, they're going to be doubled up, which isn't the best for school-aged children or people at all. And then the third thing I wanted to ask about is, who's monitoring how many of these housing vouchers that you all appropriated funds for are being turned back in to CRHA? Because I am hearing quite a bit, well, not quite a bit, but I am hearing stories of individuals that are turning those vouchers back in. You know, I want to know, is anybody keeping track of an outcome of how many of those vouchers are being, or the dates being extended so that people can find housing? And it's traumatizing to these folks to hear their stories. And it's, you know, it's very traumatizing to them to be able to say, at last, I've got a chance, you know, to find something that's not doubled up, something that I can afford based on, if I'm a contract worker at UVA, that I can afford to pay. And then not having, I know we have a very low, you know, vacancy rate here, but I'm also wondering, you know, what was the engagement with property management companies and private landlords in this city to buy into that program? As well as, you know, what areas could they be really flexible on when it comes to background? Which is, you know, one of the biggest areas that people have problems with. You know, what were those, you know, what was that, you know, strategy? And I can't find anything, maybe there is, you know, some things that were done in the way of community, you know, outreach for these folks. And I think it needs to be an ongoing, I mean, I think you're going to be able to fund them for two years, don't know what's going to happen after that. But if, you know, if it hasn't happened, can we make it happen so that these folks who get these vouchers can at least, you know, know that there are some landlords that have bought into this program that you all adopted? And can then move their children into their own bedrooms, or move themselves into their own bedrooms, and they all don't have to have five people to a room or something? So thank you.
Thank you.
So, just in response to that, the last point briefly, the vouchers, we don't, we being the housing authority, or just as a board member, like, it doesn't work in which there would be a situation in which five people are in a room. Like, you get a voucher based on the number of people who would be in your house, and then-
No, no, I'm saying that right now, they're doubled up, five people to a room, so, yeah, that they would be able to move into your city, like you're explaining.
I think she's saying that the vouchers haven't been usable because there's not supply to-
Right, I was getting to that point. So you made a, before I get to that point, you made a point in regards to who's monitoring the vouchers being returned, turned back in. So the housing authority, like, we're specifically looking at that.
Okay.
And then there's a family support service, what's Rafael's position?
Family Support Specialist, FSS?
Yeah, well, he's FSS, yes, to specifically work with the families in regards to finding placement. Now, one of the issues that we do have is that some landlords have just said that they're not going to rent to people who have vouchers, and because it's private, we can't make them or force them to do so, right. So I've had some families have to go into the county to be able to try and utilize the vouchers and whatnot. That's just the reality of where we are, because as you alluded to, there's a low vacancy rate. In regards to the point that I think you and Ms. Galvin was making, but, Ms. Galvin, Ms. Hill was making, I'm tired, it's only 9:15. The point that y'all were making about the families utilizing them, we just have to do a better job, right? And I think that's us as a council, as well as the housing authority and the community as a whole, trying to work with private landlords to let them know that it's okay. I mean, we even have talked about, and have a policy in place in which we, or have funds available in which we'll cover deposits, we're willing to pay for in the event that something happens to your home from the tenants, to be able to help you out, to kind of secure and let the individuals who own the homes, make them feel secure, that nothing's going to happen to your house. And if it does happen to your house, we got you, but it's difficult. I mean, if people are saying, hey, you have a voucher, and I only can get X amount of dollars in rent from you, but then I can rent it to someone else for an additional 500 bucks, that's what I've had some landlords tell me, and I think that's messed up, but it's their homes. I mean, what can we do?
Yeah, it's a hard job.
Yeah.
It's very challenging. And I, you know, I think a lot of ways that the Dillon Rule also prevents some initiatives from, that the city, you know, could adopt. I mean, it's all about how you engage, you know, the people, you know, profits and versus how, you know, it's very complicated, and I understand that. But just to know that there is some monitoring of what's being sent out there, and that there will be, you know, outcomes from reported back to, I guess, you all at some point, because it was, you know, city revenue that-
So we'll get the report during the housing meeting.
There will be-
I think that, you know, the two main checkpoints on this are the housing authority staff, right, who are supposed to place folks with the vouchers, and Dr. Pethia, who has to eventually, you know, get the report and understand the expenditure. I just want to be clear that Rafael's work is with public housing residents in the 376 units. He's not specifically working on the voucher program.
Correct.
Yeah, so a lot of people need a navigation assistance, because they've never leased anything in their name, and they don't know what to ask, or how to ask it, or how to broach those difficult topics like background issues that some landlords still, there are some that might, you know, look at an individual versus just, you know, a printout that comes from a criminal background company that you use to check things. So, thank you very much.
I have a comment to that, or a couple, if I may. I don't see why we couldn't encourage a roundtable with, there's an apartment buildings association, the Blue Ridge Apartment Buildings Association, and really have a candid conversation with them. And the other thing, and bring in CAR, the Charlottesville Realtors Association, because they're all affiliated with housing, I think it's time to do something to actually bring in our private sector partners. I do think, because we get notices from some of those groups to let us know when they're having job training programs to get folks into their management training programs, so why not open it up again? So, and the other thing, in the Partners for Economic Solutions Report, the Housing Needs Assessment, pointed out that the CRHA was using fair market rates for 2017, HUD's fair market rates for 2017, when our rent levels are fair market rates at 2018. There's a designation that's not working for us. That means that we have vouchers that are being used and can't be applied to rents that are too high for the vouchers that we have, because they're subjected to an outdated fair market rate. So can we please double-check that? It was in the report. It was in the report. So if you, if our, they can't, you know, so-
We can have them, we have a housing authority meeting next Monday?
Yeah.
I'll have them check it there.
I'll look it up and cite the page number for it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Carpenter.
Yes, very good points, thank you.
All right, if not, this concludes the meeting of the Charlottesville City Council. Before 9:30?